Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Province City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Deputy Clerk, please start off with a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilman Cahoon?
I'm here.
Councilmember Rata?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Here.
Council President Britta?
Yeah, the Chair will recognize a motion for the City Council to meet and close executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two for the following claims and litigation as listed in the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to go into executive session at this time?
So move it, Mr. President.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilmember Rata?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Britta?
Our motion going to executive session was passed by a vote of five to zero. We will now proceed in executive session and reconvene in open session immediately following.
It's a little long. Oh, oh, oh. Nice one. Well, these. I'll hold you. Good. It's. Oh. It's. Right. So. Okay. If you see. See. That's. It was. We just. I can hear. It's. It's. There. Well. Sixty-five. Yes, well, that's. We just. They've talked. And we. He's. I think. Go. Just. The. Right. Of course. Oh. This is. She's. Just. Uh-huh. That's. Actually. I have to show you. You have to do. For. Yeah. So. Is it? He's. Turns. I have. Actually. Yes. Please. It's. Set. So. Four K. On. Good. Good job. That was. The. It was. Still. That. That. You're. Have. Okay. Yes. So. It's. Start. Well, it's. Something. It's. It's. Well. We. Just. I look. Like. Same. Um. Oh, wait. Also. They're. That. This. Fifty. It's. Sure. And. Well. It's. 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 So. The. It's. Be. It's. It's. Well. Now. Please. Ah. That. So. Yeah. Yeah. It's. It's. Yeah. In. Oh. Yes. You. My. Make. You. Up. Uh. It's. That's. That. It's. 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 It is. But. Yeah. Hey. That. I'm. Just. So. You're. Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk, may we start off with a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Marado.
Here.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
Council President Brito.
Yeah. Next item, please.
Motion to seal executive session minutes.
Present, so moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar. It's for discussion and possible vote. We have council journals, the executive session minutes from February fifteenth and March first, and then the regular meeting minutes from March first of twenty twenty-two.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Or does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes? If not, we have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Deputy Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Next one, licenses. Before we proceed with individual, Mr. Solicitor, can we group the non-public hearing applications for holiday sales?
Yes, one through, so it'd be item seven, Roman number seven, items one through ten, if you so desire.
Okay. At the pleasure of the council, anyone have any objections? If not, would anyone like to make a motion? By the way, before we proceed with a vote, Deputy Clerk, we have any questions or concerns regarding any of these applications or licenses? Everything's in order and you have everything you need.
It is, sir.
At the pleasure of the council?
First motion will be a motion to group them.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion to group one through ten licenses?
So move to group under Roman rule seven, items one through ten.
Second.
Okay. Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye.
Next, would anyone like to make a motion at this point in time to approve or disapprove?
So move to approve those licenses just grouped.
Okay.
Second.
Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Also, those of you who are here for your license, you're all set? You're good?
The.
Now we have liquor.
Except for the public hearing license, that is.
Liquor license.
And, okay, what number we on now? Page five?
Page five.
Out of B, this is for public hearing. Deputy Clerk, you wanna?
Yep.
Take a lead, please?
Yes, sir. We have public hearing for a BV liquor license. It's new. The applicant is David Butros. It's Baja Fresh Grill Number Three LLC. It's at seventy-five Highland Avenue.
Okay. Does he have everything that we need?
He does.
He does, okay. At the pleasure of the council to question the applicant. Before we proceed to, any questions, no questions? Again, I just want to repeat, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak for or against, you have the opportunity to approach the podium. Sir?
Yes.
Okay.
I was over here about maybe eight months ago, we were supposed to open one, the old Thunderdome in Riverside.
Oh, okay.
Back up just because of the traffic and we just did a different, so we opened most Mexican world on. In East Providence, it was celebrated and that's gonna be a much better fit for us, it's much more car traffic and foot traffic, it's a pressure of the food and quality and the people, so.
And what address is that, sir?
It's like Route six. Iron Avenue.
Okay. Oh, okay.
The Old Moons.
Oh, okay, right in the shopping center. Oh, seventy-five, okay. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this gentleman's license, please approach the podium. Sir, you might step aside.
So, okay, I live directly behind you in a location, I just wanna say that I'm very responsible. Anytime I've had an issue, I have his phone number, he calls me right back.
Okay. Thank you.
So this part of business, you gotta work with the community, you gotta make sure that he is okay and it's always.
Sure. Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against this gentleman's license, please approach the podium. If not, I'm gonna close public hearing. And public hearing is now closed, and I'll be at the pleasure of the council to vote.
Move to approve the license.
Okay. Do I have a second on that approval? We have a second. Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Next license, please.
The next license is a BV liquor license. It's also new. Robert Peretti at Cigar World at eight ninety-nine Warren Avenue.
Is the applicant present at this time? Does the applicant have all their paperwork in place?
They do.
Before we call the applicant up, at the pleasure of the council, any questions, concerns, issues?
Just business hour. Can you just speak for the business hours, please?
You just state your name for the record, please?
Would you please turn that mic on? Just hit that button until it turns green. Thank you.
And what will be your license, excuse me, your business hours?
Right round, we wanna be from ten AM to one AM.
Okay.
And that's seven days a week, sir?
Seven days a week. We do, might come back and ask for a change, so it's seven AM, just because it is cigars, golf season, so we open, we have three other cigar bars in as well.
Okay.
We do open them at seven AM.
Oh.
People don't drink, they just essentially come in, they get their cigars to go for golfing and stuff like that.
At seven AM?
Yeah.
Really? Oh.
Cigar, especially in North Providence.
Why didn't you go for seven AM license then?
Um, well, I didn't, never really talked about it, discussed it, like in all our other communities, it's just been from seven AM to one.
So you wanna try ten at this point in time?
Yeah, I mean, if we can have the seven, we're not, we're not gonna operate immediately at seven AM.
Excuse me, I don't think they're getting the recording. Could you move up to the mic?
I mean, if we can do seven AM, we're not gonna currently open at seven AM. It's just for the cigar business, essentially. Even the liquor business doesn't even start until two, three o'clock in the afternoon, normally. So, because we are retail, our primary business is retail cigars.
I'll leave it at the pleasure of the council.
So is it a cigar lounge?
It is.
Or is it more of a cigar shop where they're just purchasing cigar products?
So we run, we run things a little differently than most cigar bars, like the North Providence, the Warren and our Cranston stores. We have huge walk-in humidors. We have over twelve hundred facings of cigars in North Providence.
Can you speak more into the mic, sir?
So we have twelve hundred facings right now of different cigars in North Providence. Cranston has over a thousand. Our new Warren location, which we opened during COVID, so that one's been a little difficult, but we still have over eight hundred. We sell all the accessories, golf accessories, cutters, lighters, and that's our primary business is retail, but obviously, people wanna sit there, they wanna smoke, usually during football games, soccer games, stuff like that. So the liquor helps accommodate, pay for the employees as well.
So, sorry, this has some more follow-up questions, I apologize. So does, has the fire department gone in and done its inspection with respect to your ventilation, capacity of seating? So like, I don't really know too much about your location and what the capacity is. How many seats do you have? How many patrons will be there? Do you have, are you planning on having a bar plus seating for your patrons?
Well, it is an existing location. It used to be formerly Churchill's. So we have had a fire inspection, we've had a building inspection. We had an apartment health inspection, we got our food license already. So we have, we wanna serve food, that's why we changed it from a saloon license to a BV license, because we do have like chicken fingers and chicken wings and stuff like that that we cook as well.
All right, so it makes sense that you mentioned that it was the former Churchill, so I'm very familiar with that location.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same location, same building.
All right, perfect. Thank you. You know, I just had seen a name similar to that somewhere else, and I thought that was the location. It's on a strip, which wouldn't have made too much sense. That's, that's the question, that's why there's the questioning, because I couldn't point where exactly this location was.
No problem.
Thank you for making that apparent.
At the pleasure of the council? I have a, move approval as presented. Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve as presented for ten AM?
Council President, did we close public hearing?
I, uh, no, well, you know what, this is a public hearing, just in case I don't recall, anyone wishing to speak for or against this license, please approach the podium. I'll mention it one more time, then I'll close public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this license, please approach the podium. If not, public hearing is now closed, and we'll proceed with the council at this point in time. We do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Roderick for move of approval starting at ten AM, correct, ten AM to one AM.
I seconded that motion.
And we have a second on the motion by Councilwoman Souza. Deputy Clerk, may we go with a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item, we have a presentation. It's the review and discussion of proposed ward redistricting by Ark Bridge Consulting and Training, Inc., related to the city wards as a result of the twenty twenty census, and it's Preety Matur. She will be on.
So, so you wanna make an introduction?
Sure. So I provided the council with a memo prior to tonight's hearing. I hope you all got it in the packet. As you know, every ten years, the federal constitution requires a census of the United States. As a result of that census, legislative districts from Congress all the way down to local wards and boards in cities and towns are redrawn. The, before the local, excuse me, before the local cities and towns can draw their ward districts, however, one of the most important things that has to be completed is the state legislature has to redraw their state rep and state senate districts. That was completed, and the bill and law that was passed within the last thirty days, that was finalized. As a result of that finalization, it now drops down to the cities and towns, and because the city elects council people, at least four of them, by wards, the law requires at least that those wards be pretty close in population to protect the one person, one vote principle as, as stated by the US Supreme Court case that dates back to the nineteen seventies. So basically, the goal is to try to get each of the wards, so like, one council person doesn't represent fifteen thousand people in Ward One, for instance, and then Ward Two represents only, you know, two thousand people. That's, that would be unconstitutional, because it dilutes the voting strength of the other people. So with that, the Board of Canvases, with the council's approval, went out for RFP to hire a consulting company to actually look at the current census, current census numbers, and how it affects the wards within the city. They hired ARC Bridge Consulting and Training, which took the numbers, and they gave you, they're gonna about to give you a PowerPoint presentation as to what their findings are. Just as I pointed out in my memo, the drawing of legislative or even wards in the City of East Providence is done by ordinance, so that's a legislative act. We have to have at least two passages, one including a public hearing, and then they would go to the mayor for his approval or disapproval, assuming the mayor approves it, they become law. If it's vetoed for whatever reason, it could come back for the council for a potential override. But anyway, it's a legislative act, but there are some legal parameters that Prety, the consultant, will go over as far as what the deviation in the wards can be, and she's prepared to give you the presentation tonight, and I think she also gave you, you should also have in your packet a PowerPoint presentation, which is gonna follow, which is gonna present tonight. The most important deadline, however, is apparently, and I see the administrator of the Board of Canvases here, the State Board of Elections, Secretary of State's office, excuse me, Rob Rock, from the Elections Division, has indicated that this process has to be done by April fifteenth. Now, I don't know if there's any leeway in that number, that date, I'm trying to get some confirmation from Mr. Rock, but I kinda set out a schedule for you in my memo as to if that date is a hard date, how we have to get this done before then, so, and how we can accomplish that and meet the requirements of publication in a public hearing. So with that, I think Prety's online. Hi, Prety?
She is. Mr. Solicitor, a quick clarification, that's Rob Rock Junior.
Rob Rock Junior, yes, yes.
Good evening. My name is Prety Mather, and I'm going to give you a presentation of the current wards and the proposal that we have.
We're just having difficulty hearing you, so hold on one second. I don't know if your volume's up.
My volume is up.
I hear a little bit, right? I hear a little bit of it, yeah.
While you work on that, you, you mind proceeding with the, uh, council meeting? And then the minute, um, we have some audio, you could just let us know. And we'll, but we'll, we'll have her come right in. All right.
Preity, stand by. We're just trying to get your audio to work. Thank you.
Okay. So in the interim, you want to proceed with the, uh, with the agenda at this point in time? There's no communications? No public comments? Well. Oh, how come we have none over here?
That was just us running. That's our fault.
All right, we'll start off with, uh, public comment Claudette Field. Claudette Field? Ms. Field? Oh, okay. Anthony Madeiras?
I wonder if they signed up for the licenses, maybe?
And Dan Landry, was that for the license as well?
Okay.
I'm going to proceed on. There's no appointments at this point in time. Count, council members?
First item under council members is potential city ordinance regarding the rising catalytic converter thefts and its council vice president Rodericks for discussion only.
Thank you, uh, I'm clerk, Mr. President. Guess I should continue while we're, while we're waiting, okay? Uh, along the lines of a disclaimer, I had placed this on the agenda before, long before, we saw in the news where there were three recent arrests in East, in East Providence. And it's been lately, uh, in the news. I don't want anyone to think I set up those arrests. Uh, I had been talking with the police chief about this, uh, honor about, uh, early January, when a local resident businessperson called me and reported that, to quote him, he had been hit three times by thieves taking his catalytic converters. He would get one replaced. They'd come back three different times. Uh, and he asked, what, what can we do about this? And of course, I think by now we all know it's a statewide, a regional, a national problem. I've heard from several other residents about the same thing. Uh, we've probably had, uh, forty or fifty thefts. Pass this along to the solicitor and counsel, if you want to look at some facts and, and figures. So when I ran into the police chief and I asked if he would, uh, work with me and then with the council on coming up with some kind of a, a policy, what, what could we do? And Chief Franciscone, he was, uh, very cooperative and this is happening to a lot of our residents and, and homeowners. So in a nutshell, we're not voting on anything tonight, um, asking the council, unless I hear an objection, that I and anybody here that wants to join me would work with the chief of police and the city solicitor in drawing up whatever language we need, a resolution, whatever has to uh, to the general assembly. Basically, we'll need to make the sale of stolen catalytic converters illegal or hard to do. I understand, uh, just tonight, that Providence City Council member is, is doing the, the same thing. I, I think that it's happening, we know it's happening, one, two, three o'clock in the morning. Very difficult to catch these thieves. The, the theft the other day, the catalytic converters, fifteen of them, taken out of property in East Providence were worth about fifteen hundred dollars apiece. And we were lucky that with the shop work of our East Providence Police, at the end of a chase aided by the Rhode Island State Police, they caught the guys. And I talked again tonight to the businessman who had lost so many, and he said, yeah, it's the kind of thing where you just can't pop these things back on. You know, they come in, I think with a swords all, they cut them, they go and they sell them for the worth of the precious metals that make these up. So it's not like a reputable car dealer or shop buys these and sells them. So to me, it's kind of a simple thing. We make it hard to buy them. You, you have to go from a reputable to a reputable shop. Uh, solicitor can work on an ordinance, I'm sure, for us, and, you know, there are ways to protect people. I think in Providence, what they're going to try to do is if you come in and you sell the catalytic converter, there, there has to be all the private ID and they hold it for quite a while. And I had other notes. I won't belabor it. We, we have probably a long meeting tonight. I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. So if I don't hear an objection from colleagues on the council, um, and anyone who wants to join me, let me know. Um, I'm going to move forward with, uh, talking more with the police chief, the solicitor. And quickly, uh, chief, could you add anything to this situation?
Thank you, Councilman. Good evening, Council. Um, yeah, what, what we're seeing recently is a spike in the price of, uh, what these metals are worth. So, uh, we're seeing an increase in these thefts. Um, oftentimes, it happens through the cover of darkness, um, only takes a few minutes. And these are sold and then melted down often. So, uh, the, the, the speed and the ease and the price right now is what's driving this. So it's, uh, it's pretty much it.
Thank you. All set. Okay. Appears that we have some audio at this point in time, from my understanding. Okay, so we would like to proceed with the presentation for the redistrict in twenty twenty-two. Is she here? Hello?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, awesome. All right. My name is Preity Mather, and I'm going to do a presentation about the census data and your current wards. I'm with Arkbridge Consulting, and we are a company based in the Northern Virginia area. So here are your four wards, and you have eighteen precincts. So what we did was we looked at your ward boundaries, and you can see them in different colors here. Yet the total population of the city is forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine, based on Census twenty twenty data. Looking at this data and trying to see the population of each ward, the maximum deviation is nine point zero nine percent. For redistricting, it's required that this maximum deviation should be under ten percent. So what you have is, it is under ten percent, but it is on the higher side. And what is maximum deviation? Maximum deviation is the difference between the most populated and the least populated ward. And, uh, so here, what you're seeing is you're seeing your four wards. You're seeing the total population based on Census twenty twenty. You're see, also seeing ideally what the population should be, the difference from the ideal and the percent difference. So on the next slide, what you're seeing is East Providence, the data for East Providence. In Census twenty-ten, the population was forty-seven thousand and thirty-seven. In twenty-twenty, we have a population of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine. So over the decade, the city gained a hundred and two people. And if you look at the racial and ethnic composition of the city, it's primarily non-Hispanic white, seventy-six percent, with seven percent Hispanic population, five percent non-Hispanic black population. Other, and two percent non-Hispanic Asian population, and persons of two or more races was seven point four two percent. So then what we did was we looked at where do the peo, where do people live? So we color-coded them by census block, total population by census block. So what you're seeing on this map is the darker the color, those census blocks have more population, and the darkest would have hundred and eighty-six to three hundred and twenty-three people. So on the next slide, I'm going to show you your current districts. And because the maximum deviation is under ten percent, we are going to treat this, treat this current, these current wards as Plan A. However, when we looked at it, we wanted to also see how the precincts would be. And we figured, because what you're seeing on this map, the blue line is what the state approved as the state assembly, the state house districts. And the green one, uh, the green lines are where the state senate districts are. And precincts should be completely contained in a house district, senate district, ward. So when we looked at it, we found that because of this blue line, this area would have to be a precinct by itself. And, uh, what would happen is the precinct thousand one will need to be split in order to take, in order to accommodate this. The split part will have less than five hundred registered voters. The other issue that we found with precincts was that this precinct, which is one thousand six, this has less than five hundred registered voters. Then the third issue that we thought was that, uh, precinct one thousand seven, based on this, uh, state senate line, would have to be split. And this part would have to be merged with precinct thousand eighteen. And then the remaining part of precinct one thousand seven would have less than five hundred voters, registered voters. So with these issues, we figured, let's look at another plan and see if we are able to resolve these. So Plan A is your current wards, and the maximum deviation is nine point nine percent. All incumbents are within their wards. And precinct, there are some precinct issues as we discussed in the previous slides. The layers, there is a legend here that you can see. The layers are depicted. The blue is house, green is senate. And then we also have put in the precincts, and the red star that you see is where these, where the elected officials live. So here, we came up with a Plan B. And in Plan B, we were able to balance the districts out such that the maximum deviation is only zero point nine six percent. And all the incumbents are within their wards, and we have drawn them such that the precinct issues, which we saw in Plan A, are resolved. So now let's take a look at the changes that we are, we are going to describe. So already you can see that this part, which would have to be a separate precinct, we put it in Ward Two. But, and then we took care of, of precinct one thousand six and some other issues that I'm going to show you on the next slide. So these are the proposed changes in Plan B. We are proposing four changes. So change number one that we talked about here, and here, this, these blocks, we are suggesting that they move from Ward One to Ward Two. And this change would affect a hundred and eight people, and, uh, the voting age population in this area is only fifty-one. When we look at change number two, this is precinct one thousand six. Uh, the change would be three hundred and three people, total population, with voting age population being only hundred and sixty-five. Change number three is over here. If I go back to my previous slide, this is change number three. And here we are affecting three hundred and ninety-six people total. Uh, but, uh, um, the voting age population is two hundred and seventy-five. Um, yeah. And change number four is, in order to balance the area that we took from Ward Four, and we gave it to Ward Three, we had to come down here and, uh, take some areas, some of these blocks which are highlighted in blue. We took them and we took them from Ward Three, and we put them in Ward Four. So that is four hundred and eighty total population with the voting age population of four hundred and fourteen. And, uh, these are the changes that we are proposing in Plan B. And now I'm open to questions that you may have.
Yeah, begin, Mr. President. So, um, pretty, um, first, just to recap what you said. At present, given that we are within the ten percent maximum allowable deviation from the most populated ward to the least, um, we technically legally don't have to take an action. Is that correct? We technically could live with status quo?
That is correct, and that is the reason why we presented to you as Plan A.
But the issue there is we run into all sorts of problems with the new state districts and the number of voters in each district. Um, and, and I think that there's problems with regard to there ha, there have to be public places within those districts. They have to have no more than a certain number of voters who are getting shunted to a particular public place to vote. Is that all correct?
That is correct. I spoke to you about this, this particular, this would have to become a precinct by itself. And it does, it has less than five hundred registered voters.
Okay. And can I just clarify for the record? Just because this is always a concern that somebody is monkeying with these things for political reasons, that nobody on this council had any input into what you're showing us right now?
That is correct.
So whatever happens from here on in, that's a different story. But as to what's proposed to us right now, this is, this is all math.
So, yes, yes. So this is, uh, just so there's no, no, uh, no one from the administration other than myself who actually saw this plan before, but these are based on pure numbers. Like, there's, there's a bunch of state laws that come into play. One is that a precinct can't be more than three thousand people. Uh, so that has to be an issue. And then working with the Board of Canvases, uh, you know, they're looking, the, obviously, there has to be some type of public place where a polling place can be located. So we had to look, we looked a little bit about that, though I don't think we looked very carefully. Uh, but, so that's another issue. But yeah, this, so what, what you're seeing now is based upon numbers only, pure math, pure population, uh, and then obviously, this council can do whatever it wants with it, within the law. Um, is, is, if, if they want to redraw this in any way, but there are some parameters that Preity indicated that have to be respected. One is you can't have a split precinct that, uh, overlaps the senate and our house district or, uh, that, uh, due to different districts, and that each precinct must be at least no greater than three thousand people, uh, by state law. And then there's all the other, uh, so those are the, I would say, those are the two most important numbers that you have to worry about at this point.
And Plan B as proposed satisfies every one of those concerns, correct?
That is correct.
So, Pateek, hi, um, I just want to touch base on the precinct itself. The precinct is the location, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a voting location? And that voting location is located within that ward?
Uh, yes, it has to be. A precinct has to be completely within a ward, completely within a state house and senate district.
So that, that area that you reference numerous times, uh, precinct issue number one, where exactly is that? I can't quite
Okay.
gather the geographical location in the city on that.
Okay.
Right there.
So it's right here. It's in this.
What is? What is, what is that? I can't see the print on this.
Oh.
Can you blow it up so you can see those streets, Pity?
Yeah, what I can do is I can stop this share and I can open up the actual map. Where I can zoom in, so give me a minute, let me share that.
However, you're making cha, you're making recommendations for changes within that precinct.
So here, this is the area that I'm talking about and I can zoom in here. And there is, um, let me turn on the streets also, so you can see the streets. So here. There is this major thoroughfare, Pawtucket Avenue up here. There are some, uh, Gorman Lane, Saint Mary's Cemetery.
The upper portion of Roger Williams Avenue.
And then a lot of it is water, as you can see, then we have Bourne Avenue.
So cuts off around, does it go all the way down? Yep, I see, okay, continues all the way down.
Yeah, they have to be contiguous too.
Okay. I got it.
That change was necessitated, necessitated by the change of the house and senate districts, that's why.
So is that line pushed over for the house and senate?
Looks like it, yeah, I think the senate line got pushed up.
You pull up page seven. And is there any way we can get bigger, clearer maps of the, uh, the line changes?
I can provide big, uh, E-size maps for your review. There are some other minor changes that may need to happen over here. But primarily, these are, that is for precincts. Once you approve the wards, whichever ones you would like to go with.
You, uh, take us to page seven again, please.
Uh, you're talking about the. Okay, let me take you back. Yeah, I'm here.
So that, uh, section of ward four. And plan B that will be part of war three, how many residents in that section?
Okay. Oh, you mean this part?
Correct.
That is three hundred and ninety six residents. And that's the total population, but if you look at the voting age population, it's two hundred and seventy five.
And in comparison to the, uh, section that's going to be extended on the left side, uh, to compensate for that.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that is four hundred and eighty.
I'm just curious as to why. So why would that change make a difference if you're kind of replacing one section with another? I'm just confused.
Okay, the reason being, if I go back up. Um, see here, what would happen is this precinct which is thousand seven. Uh, part of it would be split here and this would be left by itself. And then let me open up the map to show you better. And this area, this precinct which is thousand thirteen. Has a very few registered voters. So here, thousand seven will need to be split and merge with precinct thousand eighteen. Which is here and then we'll be left for this precinct which is, um, doesn't have enough registered voters. So we are recommending that if we, uh, put this area together, it would. It would not, you won't have this precinct with very few voters.
So the reason for the, the changes to that ward, it's not because of. The actual voters in the, in the ward, it's the, uh, the changing of the precinct lines, correct?
It is, see, there are, there are two changes here, sir. One is that we have the senate boundary which goes over there which I talked about. And then we have to have this precinct because we have the house line here. See before it was like the precinct line was going till here and we had enough orders. But now the house line is here and we would have to split that, so that is the reason why we are proposing this change.
And if we vote for, uh. First of all, we're, we're also voting to change the precinct lines, correct, and the senate and whatever other lines, correct?
You can't touch the house or senate lines, you're just voting the precincts within the wards, right?
So if we don't vote and, and align ourselves with the, uh, with the house and senate lines, it creates.
You have to align yourself with the house and senate lines. You have to, one precinct cannot, the same precinct has to be in the same house or senate district, you can't have one, you can't straddle a house or senate line.
And the, uh, the states are one that governs that, that process.
But as it pertains to our ward lines, that is entirely on the council.
Except for those restrictions, so you can't, because each ward has to have voting precincts, so, so you can't strat, uh, award. You could have a ward within a house or senate line, but then you can't have a precinct that straddles, within that ward that straddles the house and senate line, if that makes sense.
And, and right now, if you look at this part on the slide, the precinct goes, precinct line is here. But we cannot do that because we have the house line here, so we would have to split the precinct here. And that would not give us enough registered voters.
The house line moved up, it went north.
So this is a reaction to the house and the senate lines, is what we're doing, correct?
And, and it shifted population within the city as well.
Yeah, because of the house and senate lines, how they were geographically shifted.
Well, the, the population only was, is a hundred and two from one census to another, so that's not a, that's not a huge shift. And not all of those hundred and two are voters.
Right, but the dev, the deviation has to be under ten percent and then the shifting, right, within, then the shifting of those lines in the house and senate that. Requires to make all these changes.
Gives us something to think about, that's for sure, but we don't have too much time because we have until April fifteenth to make the decision. How many passages, two passages and a course of a two, one month period?
Correct, with advertising and public comments, so.
So the amount of advertising days that was needed.
Same as, same as other organs, no difference.
Okay.
If I may add one more thing, that April fifteenth is the deadline to get the precincts done as well. So if you, first thing you would have to approve the wards and then we would have to come in and make sure. That the precincts are completely within the wards that you have approved.
So I, I, I would suggest that we as a council start really thinking about this and considering having a community meeting here. And having some type of discussion with the public on this as well, we're gonna have to react to this. Sooner than later, because although the deadline is the fifteen, we have, that's the cutoff time for two second, two passages. So it's within the next week, actually.
So we could do a number of things and hold till Tuesdays, so our Tuesdays from now till then are, we have the twenty second, we have the twenty ninth. We have, I believe, April fourth, is that right? No, that's not right, what is the date? Fifth, April fifth and April twelfth.
Sooner the, the earlier the better, we have more discussion.
Yeah.
The thirteenth, what, what's the deadline?
The fifty.
The fif, oh, fifty, no, not the fifty.
So once you decide where the lines are, working with engineering and the board of canvases, we'll get a file that shows the street boundaries. And those boundaries will then be, be put into each ward, if you look at the current ordinances, there's a boundary saying ward one shall be. So, but that takes time too, so we have to make sure that those accurate. Um, and then I think the fifteenth deadline, uh, even though I'm not happy about that deadline, is because. If there's a change of ward, changing precincts, the board of canvases then has to notify those individuals by mail that the precinct has been changed or the voting. Been changed, so that's why that's all kind of put, put there.
So before we leave this evening, I would just recommend that we come up with a date that we meet, that we meet one day next week.
And then pre-de. The twenty second.
Twenty second?
Uh, just pitching that, I don't know, and we want us all here, so we don't.
It's a week from today.
Make sure that pre-de can come too, so.
Yeah.
The twenty second's fine for me.
I have an event, but I'll kids, I don't have to go to it. Uh, Pity, are you available on the twenty second, which is a week from today?
On twenty second, I have, uh. Uh, twenty second is open, yeah.
Okay, what time, do we have a time?
Let's grab that at six thirty.
Six thirty, six thirty, Pateek, does that sound good to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, will you be joining us live or via, um. Live, okay, oh, forget that, you'll be live. Okay, six thirty, good for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, let's mark it as stone that six thirty.
Um, can we have, I, I'd like to get the map of plan A current with the lines. Um, and then plan B with the proposed new lines, including the senate and the, um. Rep, the state rep lines and then your proposed for the council wards, just so I can see it in a, in a larger scale.
I would like, uh, the same also.
If there's, if we can have that prior to next Tuesday, so I can look over it before the meeting, that would be very helpful.
And I would recommend that, uh, if we can provide those maps, if you can post them on the website. So that the community also has the opportunity to see them before they come to the meeting, so they are prepared to make comments.
Good idea, okay, sounds good.
Clear that meeting is to discuss this further, there's not an action taking place at that.
We'll post it as a potential. A vote if you need it, if you, you know, if we can kind of, well, we, well, you know, you won't have an ordinance to vote on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a workshop.
Right.
Workshop, okay.
So that we want to set the other dates for subsequent votes now, I think we should.
Yeah, I think you should too.
I'm available the twenty ninth if we want to continue with the following Tuesday.
Sounds good to me.
So that should be first passage.
So aim for the twenty ninth for first passage, it's two weeks from tonight. And the fifth.
What time, the twenty ninth?
Go six thirty again, that seems to work for everybody, right?
So I'm anticipating that based upon your public workshop, we'll have a good idea what the ordinances or the wards will look like. And based upon that, we'll draft an ordinance. And then, so that'll be the twenty ninth for first passage, and then we have to advertise for how many days? Seven, at least seven before the next meeting, so.
So the following Tuesday wouldn't be.
We'd have to go to the twelfth.
We have to go to the twelfth, the second pa, uh, second passage.
It's tight.
Yeah, it's tight.
It's gonna be tight regardless.
Again, but hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have, I'll have some better idea if there's wiggle room on the fifteenth date, but I haven't. Leslie, have you heard if there's anything from them about any, no? Every community is in the same boat.
Any other dates we need to come up with?
Um, the twelfth isn't, isn't a good date for me.
If you want it for the record.
I don't think we could do the. Twelve is the first day we can have it.
Oh, okay.
The twelfth is the first day we could have it if we.
After the advertisement. That would be, that's the first, assuming that would be second passage.
Yeah, I'll be second.
So could we advertise after first passage or first passage on the twenty ninth? Twenty ninth takes us seven days, takes us to five April.
Yep.
I, I'm just pushing for Tuesdays because it's generally the only day I keep open for sure.
Yeah, I'm not available that Tuesday at all.
What date is that, I'm sorry? The twelfth.
Yeah.
So the twelfth is out.
I can't hear you, I can't hear you.
So if I place an ad on a Tuesday.
Which is the fifth.
In anticipation that the twenty second.
Is first passage.
Goes okay.
Yeah.
I can place an ad on the twenty second, it'd be in on the twenty fourth. To roll through, because my advertising starts on a Thursday in the post. Or I go into the journal, it's a little more expensive.
Twenty seconds is just a workshop.
Just a workshop.
So by the twenty, but we're anticipating that on the twenty ninth, we'll have first passage.
Yes.
So seven days after the first passage is what?
So I would have to advertise on the twenty ninth that morning.
Correct.
And it would, well, actually no, can't, it would go in on the thirty first.
Unless we advertise in the journal.
Unless you advertise on the journal.
Worst case scenario, we can do that.
But the journal, I would still have to have it in.
What's the plate, yeah.
Still have to have it in before that. Because if we meet on the twenty ninth, it's.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so. Assuming the advertisement, if, assuming first passage on the twenty ninth, the earliest you could have the second passage with public hearing would be April sixth. Right, assuming, assuming advertising, we, we probably have to do it in the journal.
You and I can sit down and look at the advertising.
Yeah, and we can, so we can proceed.
Yeah.
I will, so right now we have the twenty second, twenty ninth, and we don't have the third day yet, so we can, all right, we'll figure that out.
All right, very good, Mr. Pateek, we'll see you next week, next Tuesday, six thirty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, where are we now? Need a motion for next week?
No, we're, we're just setting.
Next, let me go next item.
Uh, please.
Next item under council members is conversation on community notification of council meetings, workshops, et cetera, by council vice president Roderick's discussion only.
Well, thank you, um, President, once again, I'll be brief, uh, note that the last two or three meetings, I had nothing on the agenda. So I made up for it tonight with three items, but this is an informative. Item that I want to put forward, this is not to criticize any one person anywhere. We all hear about people saying, I didn't know about this meeting, I didn't know about that meeting. This is no longer nineteen seventy, no longer nineteen eighty. It's the social media age, um, a five second history, we'll tell those who don't remember. We used to have a statewide newspaper that we got twice a day. Providence Journal delivered to us in the morning and believe it or not, we got another one in the afternoon. How could we have that much news? We have one day, two papers. The same publisher, what we did, so if we were gonna have a meeting like this. That we just talked about next Tuesday, the next couple of days, we would, we'd first go across the street where the. Journal Bulletin office was for East Providence, just East Providence. And the reporter would get all the information and it would be in the paper. And everybody would get it and they'd know about the meetings, um, didn't even have. Social media or cell phones in those days, uh, fast forward, the journal left. It went to the East Bay, now it's going all together. We don't, we don't have that, it's, it comes out once a day, they don't cover local news and they make no bones about it. They're, they're not into local stuff. We have a, a great weekly paper, East Providence Post, which has. Very good coverage, but it's timely too, it comes out on a Thursday, so you gotta work your meetings around that. There's the reporter, which disclaimer, I am a major contributor to, but that's just a monthly review of things. So how do we get the word out to the public? Um, at, at this point, um, I'm gonna ask someone to come forward if she, if she promises to be very brief. Patricia Rizendi's from the mayor's office, I forget your title exactly. Uh, Mrs. Rizendi, but I want her to show us and the public viewing at home. And again, I don't blame people for not knowing this stuff, a lot of people aren't used to this yet. But meetings and all kinds of information are listed on the city website. I think we're getting better at it, might have been a slow start as we're all getting used to it. And I have another suggestion to help even more so, but, um, Mrs. Rizendi, if you could just quickly go through, um. And, and I might say that I think every public meeting is advertised, is listed, right, I, before I was. Right, I, before I was on the council, I was going to meetings of planning board, zoning board, waterfront commission, I'd look it up, I'd go, and it was easy. So we've got to get people used to doing that. Who doesn't go on a computer nowadays? Who doesn't go on a cellphone nowadays? Who doesn't go on social media nowadays? Not many people. So we can't say that it's hard to do. With that, uh, could you quickly scroll through some stuff?
Sure, thank you, Council Vice President. So on our website, uh, we wanted, when we launched the website, we wanted to be able to provide many different places. Because we all, uh, navigate through a website differently, right? Our user interface. So currently, we have many different ways that you can get to city meetings. So one of the ways is if you're going, if you're interested in government meetings, you would click here in government. And for instance, the city council meeting, you would come to city council. This, we have the archived agenda. We have the live, watch the council meeting, so if anyone wanted to jump on now, click on that, it would launch to, um, a page where you could link to the live YouTube as well. Uh, we also have the council agenda, archived council meetings, which brings you to clerk base, and those are all filed there. So that's for the council meetings. Another way, depending on how you navigate the, um, the website, is right on our homepage. We have two different places, so we have meetings and events here, which is our calendar. And here, this is used for a number of things. If you're having a community event, we can post it here. Uh, you would just reach out to our office or the clerk's office, and we could get a calendar item here. Again, here's the city council meeting, uh, that's posted, you would click on it, it would open up to the agenda. Uh, excuse me, to the meeting information, where it's located, your YouTube link is here. Again, this launches to the live, uh, the current live, um, YouTube video. And then we also have the docket, which is posted, um, for every two weeks. Again, your YouTube link is here, it has the entire docket in its entirety. And then, um, for those who don't want to read it here, there's the actual PDF where we'll link back. So that's that example. Same for board, for different boards and commissions, for zoning, and then you.
How, how about, like, interrupt, do I, let's say someone wants to know about what's happening with the planning board, what, what would they do?
Sure.
Or the zoning board, or.
Sure, so each, uh, depart, each department has its own page, so you would come to the department and divisions page. But if it's specific to boards and commissions, uh, we created, um, we, what we did is we modified this content management system. So that we could be able to, uh, utilize, uh, and post as many, um, as many meetings as possible for boards and commissions.
Can we do an informal meeting? For instance, um, we met last week, or, or the mayor's office, um, scheduled a meeting at Riverside Rec. Can, where would that, could that be listed and things like that, that might not be a planning board, a zoning board, a council? But, uh, an important community meeting that people want to know about.
Yes, absolutely. So that would be under our meetings and events, so any kind of event that is happening, you could click here, you would come to the month. Say you want to know where, uh, you know, mattresses are being picked up, you could click through, you could navigate here, depending on which department you're interested in. And here's the, the dropdown, and you could click, say you want to know about the mattress pickup, you would click on, uh, recycling. I want to say it's under recycling or public works, and you could find it there. If there was another event, like, for instance, try to think of something, so the St. Patrick's Day flag raising that is happening this week. You could click here, you come to it, it tells you where it is, oh, here's the flyer, you'll click on that, boom, it has all the information about where and when. The event is being, um, held, and we could do this for the community as well. So if, if there's a nonprofit organization that really wants to get the word out, uh, we could also place it here. Because again, this website is for the community. So that would be one example. One last example is our public notices, uh. Where if you, you can actually drop down, as you ask about the planning board, again, you could, there's the tree commission, all of our boards and commissions are populated here. And they are linked here, so these kind of correlate with, with the, uh, what you see on the Secretary of State site. So anyone who has to file that. So that's another option.
Thank you. And again, this was not to lead anybody's parade, and it was not to criticize anyone. It's to show people that there is something here, it can probably be added to. Um, I, I would make one further suggestion, which I, I've made a few times, doesn't always seem to be very popular, but I, I think this would work. Um, I'll use the example of the system that the school department uses, it's called Connect Ed. And they can place thirty, sixty thousand phone calls, the click of a button, in about five seconds. Kind of like the code red the city uses, but I know code red can't be used for some routine things. I understand that, but I really think we should look into some kind of a general system, like the school Connect Ed. Maybe we can piggyback with them and save some money and, and expand on what they have. I hear it already from people, I don't want five more phone calls every night, I get telemarketing, I get this. That's fine, all you have to do is take your name off, and you won't get the calls. Then you can't complain if you don't know about it either.
Right.
So, a- and, and I would hope we would all use discretion, whether the council sets something up, the mayor's office sets something up. Not gonna phone people about a cake sale.
Right.
But maybe an important neighborhood meeting, um, any kind of thing like that. And if you don't want the call, you can very easily request that your phone number be taken off the list, and you'll get zero calls. On the other hand, when you see it coming in and you're saying, I'm having dinner, I don't, I don't want to hear the call, but it goes to voicemail. And then later on, you get the message.
And, I'm sorry, if I may, there's one also, uh, additional feature that a lot of people aren't aware of. So anything that you click on, so, for, for instance, let's go back to the meetings and events. So obviously, maybe I'm interested in one thing, you're interested in something else. If I click on the city council meeting, for everyone who wants to be able to get information. You could actually log in at the bottom of the page here, you could do this with press releases, you could do this with job, uh, positions, and you could log in to subscribe. Once you create, uh, a user login, it then gives you a dropdown, so you can, you can set it so that way you can receive as many. Or, um, as little notifications about whatever things, whatever you're interested in. So if you're only interested in job opportunities, you can log in here and set it so that you only receive notifications for jobs. Or just the council meeting, or just the zoning board meeting, or any commission.
And, and also under the system like that Connect Ed I was talking about, although we would probably want to notify everybody. But with the school system, they could call people within one school, three schools. All of, uh, sixth graders, you know, you can, very user-friendly. We could do the same thing with certain streets, but I, I think I would hear people already saying, no, I want to know too. So I would just do it to everybody, but thank you very much, um, Mrs. Rizendi. I just wanted to make that point that, uh, there's something out there, we've got to get more familiar with it. And wide open to any, any improvements or suggestions that we could do. Other than that, Mr. President, thank you, just not now, right? Just, just not tonight.
Well, floor's still yours, so, uh.
So I just have a question to piggyback off of that. So if the community, to Mrs., uh, Mrs. Rizendi's point, nonprofits wanted to post something of an event or fundraiser. Who do they contact to do so? Like, who's running? Uh, in other words, who's running the calendar or the social media website, that if someone wanted to get the word out, a business owner. Uh, and a, a council member wants to do something in the community, who would we reach out to so that we could have that publicized on the city website? Or the city Facebook page, that's all public access?
Uh, council, so you could contact me directly, I'm happy to post it. Um, our IT department also has access to our website, so they could also post it in each department. So if you wanted something on the city council page, for example, um, for a meeting, you would contact, um, the deputy clerk. And she also has access to your page. So each department has a designated web editor for each department, for their page.
All right, so our deputy clerk would have access to our page, the council's page on, on the website, and then.
That's correct.
And then the calendars, you could also do, and, or you.
That's correct.
Okay, and via email would be the best form of communication, probably to send.
Email, phone call, whatever's more convenient.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any other questions?
Thank you for your help. Next item, please.
Next item is organization of a task force consisting of city engineers, residents, and other interested parties regarding. The years-long problem of groundwater drainage in Riverside and other affected areas, Council Vice President Roderick's for a possible vote.
Thank you. The third of my last items is this drainage issue in, in Riverside. For as long as I can remember, southeast drainage area has, has been a, been a problem. Uh, homes in the area continue to get some water, uh, in the basements. We, we heard more about that last, um, last week. And I'm, I'm sure that from the fifties through now, our engineers, people have been working on it. So it's evidently not an easy problem. We're not gonna solve it tonight. So what I'm proposing, and I would ask if, if he's interested, i- i- if not, it's okay, but it's in Ward. Four, it's also in my ward, which is all the city, if Councilman Murato would join me in trying to, uh, going forward to set up. A task force, various people that we think we would need, and city engineers, couple from the council, residents, um. People with knowledge of this area, that list could change and expand. And that we, we start to meet, a- again, we have a lot of other things to do, but we at least start the conversation. Um, i- is there some homeowner relief, uh, that we can, we can give, um, and see where it goes? So, um, I did put it down tonight for vote, because I, I, I don't want to drag it out. So my, my motion would be that, um, the city, the city council. Um, and hopefully I'd be joined on that effort by Councilman Murato. As I, I, I know flooding can be a problem throughout the city, I know Ward Two down around the end of, what was that street?
State Street?
Yeah, State Street, it was a little different, wasn't coming up from bottom into cellars, it was going into cellars, but. Rainwater, had nowhere to go, um, so I, I think it's, it can be a problem elsewhere. But my motion is that the council set forth a, a task force to be determined. Um, and that we go forward with some community meetings posted on the web. Taking some pictures of the area and see what we can do, if anything, that's a form of a motion.
Councilman Roderick's, I would be, uh, more than happy to, uh, join that effort. Thank you, it's great. And I second that. Okay. Deputy Quick, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Next item, public hearings, ordinances for discussion and possible vote. The first is for first and final passage, an ordinance of the Council of the City of East Providence appropriating ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For the installation of a new interior sprinkler system for the Department of Public Works complex located at sixty Commercial Way. The purpose of this ordinance is to allocate the ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of the remaining unencumbered. And unallocated balance of funds remaining in the capital budget in an equal amount to two million, nine hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, this sponsor is Councilman Kahoon.
So I don't see Malcolm here, but if I recall correctly in reading through this and going back through our records. The original amount that we allocated for this effort was two hundred thousand dollars. Believe we went out for bid, got one bid back, the bid that we got exceeded that allocation by the amount that you see on the ordinance tonight, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. So the, the pitch is to extend that allocation or increase that allocation by that amount. That was the lowest bid, Councilman? That was the only bid that I know of. So it went out for one bid, we only had one bidder?
I think they, the, um, the original budgeted estimate exceeded, it came in above the, the budget. Uh, amount because of the cost of materials going up, supply chain.
Oh, yeah.
You know, as far as I know, it was only one bid on.
That happens, especially now with COVID, COVID every day. Okay, at the discretion, uh, at the council before, this is a public hearing, so council, have any questions? Uh, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against, uh, this passage, please approach, approach the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this passage, please approach the podium. If not, public hearing is now closed. And if the council has. Nothing to say at this point in time, uh, Councilman Kahoon, would you like to raise that into a, uh?
So I'll, and I'll read it, I move to approve an ordinance of the Council of the City of East Providence appropriating ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For the installation of a new interior sprinkler system for the Department of Public Works complex loaded at sixty, located at sixty Commercial Way.
Uh, so Councilman, before we proceed with that, but where would that money come out of?
So that would become from, uh, the remaining un- unallocated capital balance.
Okay.
Currently, that amount is almost three million dollars, two point nine million dollars, so pulls from there.
So we do have a motion on the floor, would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, with that being said, uh, Deputy Quick, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, next item, please.
Next item, ordinance is for second passage. The first one is an ordinance rescinding the prior bond borrowing authorizations. The summary is to rescind and extinguish the authorization to borrowing for select projects, the sponsor is Council President Brito.
Again, this is to clean up the, uh, old bonds that we have on the books dated back to, two of them dating back to nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, the first one is a sanitary sewer bond, which was in the amount, original amount of one million, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. We have a remaining balance of three thousand dollars, we're looking to clear up. Uh, the second one, going back to nineteen ninety-eight, was the high school bond, uh, in the amount of five million, ninety-seven, uh, thousand. Um, there was a balance on that for two thousand dollars, we're looking to clear that up as well. The third one, going back to two thousand and two, which is a community rec complex, which is a five million dollar bond. And as we all know, the community had voted for it, however, we never went forward with, uh, processing a, um, that bond for five million dollars to build a ba-. To build a rec center. Uh, the third one is, um, excuse me, the fourth one is the water system improvements, which was for two million, one hundred thousand. Um, project went for two million dollars, there's a balance of a hundred thousand dollars, we're looking to clear that up. I just want to really quickly, I know there were some questions and concerns about the, um, community rec complex bond. That was tied into Martin Middle School, provided that, you know, uh, Martin Middle School abandoned the property, a recreation department, excuse me, a rec depart, uh. Rec center was going to be built on that, that was at the discretion of the school department, whether or not they were going to abandon the school. It's obvious and evident, evident that that school is not going to be bent, uh, abandoned, and, um. That bond was tied to that land. Uh, Malcolm, would you like to just expand upon that just a little bit?
Yes, Council President, that is, that is correct. I reached out to bond attorney earlier today, just to confirm, there was, uh, questions raised by Councilwoman Souza and Councilman Kahoon. And they were just wondering, on that five million dollars, could we carve out a piece of that? The, uh, but when we went over it with bond attorney, the third paragraph under section A, it says, upon the abandonment of the Martin Middle School by the school department of the city. To finance then conversion, but it was upon the abandonment of the school. Uh, so, um, when she read that, she goes, it, it's pretty specific, you have to, the school would have to abandon Martin Middle School to be built on. So I think we're talking about rehabbing that at the moment, and so this has been about twenty years. And most of these are old, um, the other three, we used most of the bonds. What happens is, uh, a quick overview. When we think about going to bond, we put a referendum out, and we come up with a, a dollar amount. Um, most of the time, we hit that dollar amount exactly when we go to bond. And the other three, we used most of the bond, we had three thousand left over, and one, two thousand, and a hundred thousand. And so those are just residual amounts, you're going to pay more of that in bond cost, it wouldn't make sense to go out to bond, so those would be easily extinguished, we just have to do that through ordinance. And I believe the only questions that the two council people had brought up before was on the five million dollar for the community rec center. And was it possible to carve out a piece of land to put that on, which the answer was unfortunately no. So if there are any other questions, I.
I, I just have one, um, this, what the ordinance proposes here is not freeing up money per se. What it is doing is essentially reducing those allocations to zero, those remaining allocations to zero, right?
Correct.
Okay. So less people think there's going to be a whole bunch, bunch more money floating around out there, there isn't, there just isn't council approval to spend money.
Correct.
And correct me if I'm wrong as well, Malcolm, this kind, this would have an effect on our bonding capacity as well. So if we were able to bond maximum a hundred million dollars, and we utilize, say, uh, seventy percent of that, thirty percent of which is held up from, you know, all. thirty percent of which is held up from, you know, old bondage, uh we will not be able to bond if 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 my memory serves me correct.
That is correct. You can bond up to three percent of the the levy, hundred twenty million or something. And technically, you've got, you know, five point one million tied up that you couldn't go to bond for. So that does give you some more capacity.
Okay. Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, uh please approach the podium. Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against this bond, please, or rescinded these bonds, please approach the podium. If not, public hearing is now closed. I'll leave it at the discretion of the council.
So uh just Malcolm, I just want to say thank you for running that to ground. Appreciate you answering that question. That said, uh I move to approve the ordinance as written, second passage. It's the second passage.
This is second passage, yes. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon um for approval.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Rodrick. Deputy Quick, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Cahoon. Councilman Marado. Council Vice President Rodrick. Councilwoman Souza. Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Next item.
Next item is an ordinance adopting an amended East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Tax Increment Financing Plan, the amended project plan, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance certain public infrastructure and public improvements necessary in connection with the East Point side project, site project. The summary is a list of findings, determinations, and declarations with regard to the East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Tax Increment Finance Plan. The sponsor is Council President Brito, and the presentation would be from the City of East Providence Planning Department.
Thank you, Deputy Quick. Uh, by council, Ellis here. Okay, okay. Mr. Fazioi as well.
Bill, are you putting anything up on the screen or?
Uh it's so, yeah, so I have pretty much the same presentation that I had last time. I don't know if you wanted me to go through that again, or would you rather just?
Can you just go through it real quick?
Okay, sure. Okay, yeah, if you want to call it up, sure. I'll go really really quick.
Just to give the public a grand idea as to where the East Point is and what exactly that site and project is. Uh look at the take place as well and what we as uh our council is looking for. Or this developer is looking for too.
Yeah, so I think there were handouts provided to the council as well, and we can call it up on the screen. I can uh walk you through it. But in in addition to myself, uh in the audience is Ellen Corno. Flynn, who is the city's bond counsel. Uh we also have representatives from Munich Cap, who provided the financial analysis for the proposed TIF along with Josh Berlinsky, who's the attorney for the developer, along with Matt Blaze, who's the, with the city's financial advisor, uh Hilltop Security, so.
So the last several meetings, actually, we had no presentations. We're actually out of here in record time. And this meeting here, I think we have more presentations than this meeting here and all year combined, literally.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so again, just it's because we, I I, you know, made this very similar presentation back on this back in February. But again, this is a proposal by the same developer who developed Kettle Point to take another old industrial legacy site in our community, uh which was home to a steel mill, a wire manufacturer that's been laid dormant for about now close to thirty years to bring that back to life. So um we can kind of go through the presentation, like explain what the uh, what the site looks like before and what it looks like now and what we hope it will look like in the future. So if you go to like slide three, we can kind of give you a historical picture of what the site was like going back to the late eighteen eighties. Yeah, right there. So so this was uh home uh with, you know, a lot of people here in the city. I know Mr. Rodrick, you probably remember when Washman Wire was here. Uh, you know, for a long time. At one time, it was the world's largest copper and steel wire maker in the in the country. And this gives you sort of an overview of what what type of industrial complex was here. This is uh located uh in the Phillipsdale part of the city, very heavy industrial, very heavy metals. And it uh served as as this purpose up until about nineteen ninety four. Uh if you go to the next slide, after Washman Wire sort of went out of business, it became a business called Ocean State Steel, which was actually a Swedish company uh that was producing steel on the site. Uh that was shut down in nineteen ninety four because of DM, because of environmental concerns. Uh and and so when the site was shut down in nineteen ninety four, the site really became quite abandoned. These are some pictures uh that show what some of the structures deteriorated into uh in after the nineteen ninety four shutdown of the property. Uh since then, the next slide talks about how the most of the property, the buildings have all been shut down, the site's been remediated. But now we have a a large site that's been fenced off, it's vacant, doesn't look very attractive from the street. It's right on Roger Williams Avenue and Bourne Avenue, next to Phillipsdale Landing. So uh it's it's a very attractive piece of property because it abuts the Seacoal River in Omega Pond. So it's a, it would, it would be a very nice redevelopment site. Again, it's uh fortunate that site's been remediated from an environmental point of view. So if you go to the next slide, we can talk about some of the previous history. Again, Ocean State Steel was in operation until ninety four, until it was shut down. Uh there was a proposal back in two thousand and one to uh redevelop the site uh by uh some firm on in New York called Jean Over. Unfortunately, they never got off the ground. They but they did do, what they did do is remediate the site from an environmental point of view. So the site's ready for development from an environmental point of view. It's ready to go. And there were a series of other redevelopments that failed. But now uh Churchill and Banks, who is uh the current developer, and again, the developer of Kettle Point, uh submitted plans in twenty twenty to redevelop it. And the next slide talks a little bit about sort of the overview of the site. So this gives you a nice uh uh view uh in terms of the upland portion and the uh waterside portion. So it's really split into two uh on Roger Williams Avenue, where uh that abuts Omega Pond. And then the other, the other portion of the property uh is right on the, right on Seacoal River. And I remember, this site's been fenced off since the mid nineteen nineties. So uh nothing's, no one's been on this site legally uh for, you know, close to thirty, oh, yeah, because of about thirty years. So the idea is to open the site up, add additional housing, and add uh public access. So the next slide talks a little bit about the proposed redevelopment should include uh three hundred eighty seven units. It should be built over a series of, you know, years, probably five years. It won't obviously be built all at once. There'll be market rate units in addition to age restricted affordable units, which I believe there'll be age restricted for fifty five and older, uh you know, income days, affordable housing units, uh twenty eight road houses, duplexes, uh single family homes, and a series of other waterfront homes. But also, what what is good about the site is that on the site plan, you can see that it includes a public walkway uh along the perimeter of the property. And then also uh a kayak launch on the Omega Pond side, which will be able to get people to kayak up to the Ten Mile River. So uh that'll all be public amenities, and that's what some of the public improvements will be paid for through this financing. You can probably just fast forward to a few other slides. Again, what the what the benefits are is that we're developing a vacant and blighted site on the Seacoal River. We're adding to the city's housing supply. Uh we're including market rate and age restricted affordable housing units. We'll continue to add to the city's tax base and also certainly improve the the market uh, sort of the assessed values in the surrounding areas. Living next to an abandoned piece of property is never good for uh anyone's property value. So adding some activity, I think, will improve the area. It'll provide access to the Seacoal River and Omega Pond for the first time since the eighteen eighties. And actually, development of the site will improve the environmental quality by uh controlling stormwater management and creating some stewardship for the property.
Can I ask you, uh Fazioi, you mentioned the kayaking in Omega Pond. It will be public right away. So if I live in the tipper Riverside or wherever, I can come there with a canoe or kayak.
Yeah, there'll be a publicly, publicly accessible parking spots, open for everybody. It'd be a public, uh fully public kayak launch. For not just for the residents of the development, for for any, anybody in the city, really the state, or anybody in the general public could use that, so. You know, so uh and then the, all of these projects are going to be uh financed by what we call it, the tax increment financing. And I have a few slides that talk about the general perspective of what taxes, uh tax increment finances do. And this slide sort of really summarizes it best is that it doesn't really necessarily uh generate, it doesn't involve any other revenue other than the revenue that's solely generated on the property. There's no other revenue in the city that's being devoted to this project. The only people, the only taxes that are going to be used to support the public improvements that allow for the redevelopment of this property are from the people who live here and the and the businesses that live here. No other revenue secured or obligated for this. So we're just taking revenue that doesn't exist now, and as the property value of the property increases, that generates new revenue. That's channel to pay for the public improvements.
And that's what they did over at Kettle Point as well. Uh one quick question, uh with respect to the easement uh from one parcel to the other, has that been taken care of and addressed as well?
Yes, yeah. Now, the attorney was able to speak to that, but all of this is being, as you know, being worked out with the judicial receiver where the city is in 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 litigation of this site, which just a solicitor can provide you a little bit more opinion. But uh this is all the final details, and I I I think it rolls on uh being cleared for this to be uh sold. You know, sometime later this spring, so. So they've taken care of the railroad crossing, the uh issue with the two parcels and the easements and all of that's in place, so.
Okay, so provide that this goes through this evening. Looking to commence at when?
I believe this summer. Yeah, that's the goal, so. So that's really the the highlight of of what it is. And I have uh, if, you know, people from uh the uh other experts provide, you know, more question, answers to technical questions, things of that nature. But again, the point is is that uh this is, and there is a memo you also have attached from the city's financial advisor. This does that adversely impact the city's credit rating, debt capacity, a budget? Because again, we're just recycling revenues that don't exist now and then channeling it into this project in addition to uh having revenue accrued to the city's general fund.
And this is a public hearing, uh just so everyone understands, and I'll leave this at the pleasure of the council if anyone has any questions we got in this project.
May I? So just to follow up on my questions from the last sign, Bill, and having gotten a chance to read through the actual proposed agreement this time. So what it appears to me from a numbers perspective is that the the city's share immediately will be thirty percent of the tax increment, right? So as soon as that, as soon as that assessed value begins to go up, the city will realize thirty percent of what that value is, and then the city's share will increase over time to ultimately a hundred percent at the end of the term.
Correct. And uh again, the the revenue share right now is calling for seventy, thirty percent split. For seventy percent of the revenue will service the bonds and thirty percent will go to the city directly. But as we see in Kettle Point, as the uh project overperforms projections, that thirty percent will actually increase. Because once we satisfy the requirements on the bond payment every year, any excess goes to the city. And that's exactly what happened in Kettle Point last year. So the city realizes its initial thirty percent of the revenues and an additional half a million dollars in last fiscal year. Because the, there was enough revenue to satisfy the bond payment. So uh we feel that this uh, this is a very good approach to make this work. We're leveraging for every dollar in public investment, we're getting five dollars in private investment.
And also, the developer is restricted with the amount that they can leverage, right? I think they can't go over sixty percent of the available.
Right. Yeah, and so the bond size, it's being asked, is not to exceed twenty two point two five million dollars tonight, so.
Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please approach the podium.
Bill, I just have a question. I'm just a little confused uh when we talk about that twenty two million dollar bond. So the city's taken out a bond, essentially, right? And to help the developer develop his property or her property, whatever, that's essentially in a nutshell.
Yeah, so the the city's portion represents the uh contribution for the public improvements. It's not to subsidize the developer for their private costs or any of that, but the twenty two million roughly is to pay for public development costs like uh roads, sewer, public, you know, rights of way, the kayak lines, things of that nature. It's not necessarily going into developers' pocket to help them finance his private costs, like, you know, building, you know, apartment buildings or houses.
Well, what what other projects have we uh done something similar?
Kettle Point's probably the best example, Councilman, and uh so this would be the second, you know, this really is a really interesting bookend because Kettle Point is at the southern end of the waterfront. This is the northernmost end, so it's the same exact approach.
Where are we as far as, uh how far along are we with those?
Kettle Point, I mean, the Kettle Point project or uh Kettle Point.
That bond, well, how much was that bond?
Uh that was a little over ten million, and then uh that was issued in twenty eighteen, I believe. So that's been uh, it it, that's been out for a few years. But again, uh the projection, the actual revenues we're getting for it are far exceeding the projections.
So when you say that the city uh involvement is the road sewer, but that's part of a normal development, isn't it?
It's true, but these sites are such a challenge from an environmental and remediation point of view. To ask a developer to make, you know, invest this money privately to build in private, you know, public roads would make the project infeasible. You know, the the rates they they have to charge for the houses and the apartments would not make them competitive.
Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please approach the podium.
Hi, my name's Ken Schneider, and uh for six years, we lived, you know, in the neighborhood of uh Ocean State Steel. And it was absolutely horrendous. So thank God that they're they're out of here. Uh the state did deem them that they were the biggest, they polluted more than every other company in the state of Rhode Island combined. Um but I haven't heard about the, you know, the price of these houses. But, you know, just to the south of this project, you know, at the end of Dexter Road, there's a company that uh isn't the cleanest in the world either, and I'm wondering if that's being addressed, uh if that's taken into account. And also about traffic. I mean, this is the first that I'm hearing about it, so maybe traffic was talked about last time. But I'd be interested to know what the uh traffic situation is going to be on Roger Williams Ave, because it's a pretty small road.
Mr. Fazioi, you have your traffic engineer here.
I can ask the developer's attorney to maybe come and speak about the traffic studies that were done during the development plan review. And then also um discuss, I guess, what you feel the market conditions are for this this project.
So uh good evening. Uh my name is Josh Berlinsky. I'm with the firm of Darrow Everett, and we represent the applicant Noble Development, a subsidiary of Churchill Banks. Uh with regard to traffic, um in connection with the waterfront commission approval of the project, which took place last summer, we had to submit a traffic study, which was peer reviewed on behalf of the uh city. And the conclusion set forth in the traffic study, which I believe are matters of public record, is that there is no changes in level of service, I believe, at the primary intersections for the property. And given the uh approximate number of units which we set forth, which is about three hundred ninety, and uh various travel times for the various residents, as unlike Kettle Point, this is entirely a residential development. And the conclusion that I think was agreed upon by, I think, pair engineering was the the peer review, was um, was that there would be minimal to no disruption in the surrounding areas. So that, you know, as part of the tip presentation, we didn't have traffic prepared. But that study is is was previously submitted to waterfront, was approved by by the city, and I think was endorsed by the full commission at their approval last summer. Uh in terms of the market, uh it's a little early in the process. Um, you know, the rental, uh the, there's a significant number of condominiums and rental properties. Um on the Seacoal parcel will be primarily condominium. On what we call the Omega parcel will be primarily rental. You know, I I would argue it's probably going to be a little bit below what the market has been for the Kettle Point properties. You know, as we get further along in our financing and our construction loan, we'll be able to set those price points, but the idea is not to set the new market there. Um the Kettle Point condominiums have have sold quite well. Uh I actually am a resident myself of the Kettle Point Apartments, which is fully leased up. So, you know, fortunately, the the markets have been able to absorb those units in in due course and and with proper haste. So um unfortunately, those price points haven't been confirmed just yet. But but the the plan is to kind of price it appropriate to the market, slightly different locations, Mr. Fazioi said. So that'll get refined probably in the next few months as we finalize our financing program.
Is there any way we can get a copy of that traffic study?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And may I, and I'm sorry, you said your name's Josh, is that right? Nate, nice to meet you, Josh. So the um, just walk everybody through that process of how the traffic study works, right? So what I heard and what I previously heard is the developer must have an independent party do a traffic study. And then that independent traffic study is then reviewed by a third party engineering firm, correct?
That's correct, engaged by the top, by the city. So we submit our, we are a traffic consultant. You're exactly right. We submit a report. Um the city then engaged a third party to review the report. They issue a recommendation to waterfront. They also ask our traffic consultant to further review certain elements of the traffic study to either confirm if, for instance, like if a lane change was required or to confirm a traffic count. I think at one point, there was a question as to whether or not some of these counts were COVID specific. So they asked him to go back, I think, and recount once things had begun to reopen. So so there's an ongoing dialogue between um the applicant's traffic consultant and the peer review engaged by the city. And the, the peer review engaged by the city ultimately concluded that, um, our traffic report was, was an adequate and appropriate description of the, of the, uh, now the traffic that would be generated, as well as the impact that would be, um, it'd be had and, and thought that was an acceptable program and, and policy and, um, depiction of what would take place once the development was constructed.
Thank you.
You know, obviously, there's going to be an increase in traffic when you have a property with zero. And you add any type of residential, there's going to be an increase in traffic, we know that, but the traffic study indicates that the road is, uh, has the capacity to service the traffic, because, you know, being residential, you're going to have people leave in the morning and come home at night. And the daytime, uh, hours shouldn't have that much of an increase in traffic. We've already been talking to Ripta about them increasing their bus service. Or there, there, anytime there's a new development, they want to be notified, so if they want to increase their bus service, and there is a bus, I believe that goes up Roger Williams Avenue, and they're already starting to, the public hearing process to start increasing the bus routes to services area. So we would encourage people to use Ripter as a, as a viable, uh, you know, way to, you know, if you live there, you don't necessarily drive it to Providence, you can certainly take the bus or, or take other ways of transportation, so.
And Pataca's getting ready to tie into the commuter rail.
Right, that's so, yeah.
Josh and, uh, and, and Bill, both was, anything done regarding school-aged children, for instance, I'm told Kettle Point has zero school-aged children as we sit here today, so that never materialized as a problem. How about any planning here?
Yeah, I think our fiscal, the fiscal impasse was submitted, maybe it showed three. You know, again, uh, these are, uh, you know, rental units typically don't attract a lot of, a lot of school-aged children. Uh, I think school-aged children are great, you know, to be honest with you, so I think we need more of them. Uh, you know, I think, uh, the continuation of the human species is a good thing, uh, but that's controversial, I know. But, uh, we, we, we don't expect a large impact to school.
Most of the units that will be sold, would that be fifty-five and over?
Uh, for the affordable, yeah.
For affordable, yeah.
So I just had a couple of questions, and it kind of piggybacks off of the traffic. So you mentioned, um, about Ripta, and I think that going into Rumford, that area does need a little bit more. Um, I don't recall, and Council President, maybe you know, on Roger Williams, are there any stops for Ripta along Roger Williams?
There is a stop, however, there is no bus shelter.
Well, that, we know there's not a lot of buses throughout us.
So there is a stop, if I'm not mistaken, if it's, I think it's at the bottom of Wilson and, and Roger Williams.
We've already talked to, uh, the Ripter officials, and they would love to create a bus stop at this, once this.
Um, I guess my other question would be, I know we have the Henderson Bridge Project, and given that most of the residents from Rumford come through, um, that area and come to catch ninety-five, one, I ninety-five, um, down either the center of the city or now hopefully the newer, um, waterfront drive. How is that going to impact getting on to the, um, the highway in times of timeline of them completing that project for that new on-ramp?
Yeah, I think it, it might coincide right around the same time, I think the new on-ramp to one ninety-five should probably be ready in about maybe two or three years, you know, so by the time, I don't think you're going to, even though construction will start this summer, I don't think you seek occupancy probably for another couple of years.
No, I own that, so our, right now, our construction sequence plays out over about a five-year period. So assuming that we close on the property in May and break ground June or July, that's the, the current schedule. So that really includes, you know, installing the roads and installing foundations, probably wouldn't have buildings for occupancy for about a minimum of eighteen to twenty-four months. And so that schedule hopefully puts us toward the tail end of that construction on the bridge project. But yeah, we wouldn't be looking to have, um, fully occupied, uh, properties for, for quite some time.
Yeah, and then, but hopefully by that time, water, that waterfront drive access to one ninety-five will be open. That might divert some of the traffic that goes on Roger Williams and through Summit and all of that.
Right, because that is already backed up and congested with everybody coming from CCON and Rumford, and I can just imagine having, you know, a hundred plus units with additional incidents.
You know, you know, and, uh, we, we, and the traditional views of transportation councilmen are changing, a lot of people are working from home now. Uh, things have, you know, things have certainly changed after COVID. Um, so, uh, it'll be curious to see just how robust the back-to-work, uh, market is with people going back to office. We don't expect a lot of traffic, obviously, from the, uh, the age-restricted units, you know, they're, they're going to be mostly retired people. They'll probably stay on site, so, uh, that won't probably contribute a lot to the traffic flow.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm still stuck on that twenty-two million, sorry. So that, so how much would that cost, is it going to cost us anything in the end?
And, yeah, so the way it works, Councilman, is that, um, right now, the, the property's generating zero in revenue. The city actually owns the property because we took it from tax side, I believe. So, um, the, the, the plan is, is as development takes place, there's going to be new revenue, it'll be, or, or crowing. Uh, because there's nothing there now, literally zero. As that new, as new assessments take on the property, there's going to be new taxes generated that don't exist now. So the city's not losing out on any revenue because we have nothing to begin with. So as new revenue arises, we're going to be using some of that revenue to pay for the bonds. And then the, the other portion will be going right to the city, so it'll be benefiting right from the get-go uh, in, in terms of when, uh, the, the property's developed. If, if the project fails, if it doesn't go through, if it, uh, stalls, there's no recourse to the city. The city's not responsible for the debt service and those bonds, it, it sits on the developer. And the people on, who live there, that if their, uh, revenues don't materialize to equal the annual debt service payment, we have the ability to put a special assessment, just like in a club, if there's a shortfall. So just those people and the properties in that district make up any shortfall, so there's no recourse to the, uh, city's credit rating, tax, tax impact, or budget, so.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, anyone wishes to speak for or against, please approach your podium, if not, public hearing is now closed, and at the pleasure of the council.
Put on the record, so it's in the minutes that this, this TIF was advertised, uh, in accordance with the redevelopment plan for the, um, for the project at least three times in the Province Journal before this meeting, so just make sure the minutes reflect that, okay?
So I, I just want to add that as, uh, Mr. Schneider said, and I remember those days, this went from one of the worst industrial areas, as identified by the state of Rhode Island, to people, um, complaining daily about the noise, the dirt, the pollution. It went through years of litigation, it's now not bringing us a penny, probably costing the city money. So it's an attractive project and adds to our, our waterfront, so I, I support it.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahun.
Aye.
Councilmember Rado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, next item, please.
Next item is an ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. The summary is section eighteen dash three oh seven, no parking on Broadway on the west side from Freeborn Ave to Warren Ave. Sponsor is Council, Council Vice President, uh, Rodrick.
Um, Mr. President, I have nothing to add, we talked about this, uh, at length, the last meeting, this is second passage. There was no objection last meeting, so I have nothing to add to it, uh, is this public hearing?
Yes, it is.
So I'll hold off on a motion.
Okay. Uh, again, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, uh, please approach your podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium, if not, public hearing is now closed, at the pleasure of the council, you have any questions, concerns, issues, anything you want to discuss?
Vote for approval, Council President.
Okay, do I have a second on that approval?
Second.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call, vote, please?
Councilman Mahun.
Aye.
Councilmember Rado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance is an ordinance and amendment of chapter eighteen of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. The summary is section eighteen dash three oh seven, no parking on Goldsmith Avenue on the east side from Totten Avenue North for eighty feet. Sponsor is Council Vice President Rodrick.
Oh, Mr. President, same, um, feeling here, it's second passage, it was talked about at length, it's been advertised, there's no objection. So pending, um, any comments, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium. Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium, if not, public hearing is now closed, at the pleasure of the council, any discussion on this ordinance? No discussion, uh, Councilman Roderick, would you like to form it into a motion, please?
Oh, sure, I'm so moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahun.
Aye.
Councilmember Rado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, last and final ordinance, please.
Last ordinance is an ordinance and amendment of chapter eight of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended, entitled licenses and business regulations. The summary is amending the ordinance to exclude certain crafters, artisans, religious groups, and civic and youth groups from the requirements of getting a hawkers and peddlers license, the sponsor is Council Vice President Rodrick.
Uh, Mr. President, same thinking, uh, this was talked about at length, uh, passed first passage. Uh, we know that we had a vendor's craft fair canceled in the city, uh, because of the technicality, we had several, um, crafters and vendors at the last meeting, uh, all in support of this. And I, I think it's, again, pending more comment tonight, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, Councilman, this is, uh, second passage, so therefore it is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium. I will repeat it one more time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium. If not, public hearing is now closed, at the pleasure of the council, anyone have any questions or concerns about this ordinance?
No, I move to approve, Council President.
So we have approval by Councilwoman Souza, and anyone like to second that motion? Second, we have a second by Councilmember Rado, roll call vote, please?
Councilman Mahun. He left, that's right, recused. Councilmember Rado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you.
Council President, if I may, at the pleasure of the council, we have, um, an applicant here who, for zoning on section B reports of other city officials under, um, Mr. Prametal on the zoning that's looking for approval of a business sign, instead of keeping that applicant here longer
Oh, true.
um, in the evening, if we could just move that up on the docket so that that applicant can.
Most certainly can, we could have done that earlier, too.
So, next item will be, um, under reports of other city officials, there'll be zoning at Prametal. It is Jackie Trudell, DBA Jackie on Broadway, sign for new business, thirty-six inch projection, twenty-four inch tall, eleven feet and four inches above the sidewalk, to the bottom of the sign will be over a public sidewalk for discussion and approval and possible vote.
Good evening, let's state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Jacqueline Trudell, um, address three twenty-four North Broadway, from Ford, Rhode Island, zero two nine one six.
Okay. And what can we do for you this evening?
So, the sign that we'd like to put up for the new business, which is a women's consignment clothing business and jewelry business, is a sign that's going to project over the sidewalk on North Broadway. The dimensions of the sign are thirty-six inches in its projection, twenty-four inches in height. The bottom of the sign is eleven feet four inches from the pavement to the bottom of the sign. Uh, the sign will be attached to a masonry building there, actually a brick building, and it will be done in accordance with standard practices by a licensed contractor and sign company.
This is right at the corner intersection, I should say, center in North Broadway. So when you said it protrudes thirty-six, so it comes out three feet?
Yes.
From the, from the building face?
Yes.
Over the sidewalk.
Over the sidewalk, eleven feet four inches in height.
Yes, it wa, it was Ed's feeling that we would, um, need to have your blessings to do this because the sign projects over a public walkway.
Will it be suspended or anchored?
The sign itself will be, um, suspended from a bracket.
Oh, okay, I see, all right, I get you now.
So if you recall, just, I'm sorry, so if you recall way back when we, council had to approve
Yes.
balconies across the street, those balconies across the street pursued over a sub, uh, a, a, a public way. So the city technically owns from the street upward, so that we break the plane with, with this, with those balconies or this sign. So it's Ed Prametal's, uh, recommendation, because if we break the public plane, that we need city council approval to do that.
I don't have any issue with that, at the pleasure of the council.
I think it's a great idea, um, it's the location that's going to give you acts, people access to see what that is. So it's going to give you good visibility, coming down the street as opposed to somebody coming right up to your door and then looking over at the, when they're at the light to see, oh, there's a shop here, okay, maybe stop there. So this is great, it's good visibility for you to, um, to get some, um, marketing, you know, and people, yeah, people can see it, so they don't get lost and go buy it and have to turn around, come back. So I think it's, it's a great idea, and I'm glad that you guys came before us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it, I, I see Ms. Bo Shane is here from the school committee. We have some tall players in the high school, none that you know of at ten feet tall or eleven. So if they're walking down there, so I think that's a great idea for the business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, so this is on for a vote, anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahun.
Aye.
Councilmember Rado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
I apologize, you had to wait so long, I, had I known that, I would have brought you, put you right up.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, hope you enjoyed the meeting. Next item, please.
Next item, we do not have any continued business, new business under Mayor Communications. Appointment not requiring council confirmation, Deborah T. Omerod, reappointment to the East Providence Historic District Commission. The term will run from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, through March fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. And then we also have Nancy Moore, she has a reappointment to the East Providence Historic Commission, the term is also March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, through March fourteenth of twenty twenty-five. The items for discussion will be the twenty-twenty-one departmental accomplishments and the twenty-twenty-two goals by Mayor De Silva.
We're going to wait for him to set this up, excellent. Uh, I've tried to come before this honorable counsel on a couple of occasions, unfortunately, it kept getting sidetracked, once with COVID, once with a, a death in the family, and last time, uh, we had an important bill before the General Assembly that I was up there testifying on behalf. Uh, but I think it's important to review with the council and the community, some of our accomplishments over this past year during what was, uh, a difficult year with the pandemic, um, and you know, that, that were impacting our services and what we were able to do. But despite that, uh, I'll be happy to report on some great progress here in the city. Next. So the first thing we got to doing is we continued, uh, caring for our community. Uh, uh, our first, our first responsibility and our primary responsibility was to make sure that we took care of people during this pandemic. Uh, we were able to establish a COVID-nineteen call center and a clinic at the senior center. Uh, we lobbied for and opened a regional vaccination pod, which was very successful. Uh, not only did it service our immediate residents, but those of the surrounding community. We had walk-in test sites at Bree Ball, and then we lobbied for and were awarded a second testing site at the Fuller Library. During the year of twenty twenty-one, we issued thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine vaccines, and we tested seven thousand times. In addition to, uh, the pod that we set up, we also held several pop-up vaccine clinics to try to reach as many residents as possible. Public safety accomplishments were many, uh, but just to highlight a few, we're very honored that the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency chose East Providence to be the host of the East Bay Heavy Rescue Task Force. We met with the director of EMA, well, as well as, uh, a fire chief and members of his command staff to discuss this. Uh, it's an honor for our community to be hosting it, because not only, uh, uh, does that give us quicker response times should we ever have to use our heavy rescue task force, but in addition, we get seventy-five thousand dollars annually, uh, as a grant to facilitate training, so we're offering our firefighters and our personnel more training in the way of heavy rescue task force, uh, operations. We also staffed a force rescue, uh, in Rumford, and we also graduated uh, our largest training academy to history, there was, uh, in history, there was twenty, uh, recruits that graduated the thirty-fourth Training Academy. At the same time, we started a recruitment effort to, uh, to kick off a thirty-fifth. At the same time, we started a recruitment effort to, to kick off a thirty-fifth Training Academy, which will be kicking off in a couple of months, or even actually, I think in a month this year. And that's the thirty-fifth Training Academy with twenty-one recruits slated to be part of that. Our police department was very active also in, in trying to enhance their manpower and to bring more recruits on. We held two police recruitment drives. There were a total of ten new hires, sixteen promotions, and we rolled out a test for a body-worn camera system. So as you all know, there's money available at the state level to fund police body-worn cameras. We're waiting on, and I believe we're very close to a policy being issued by the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office, which will allow all municipalities to be on the same policy. And once that happens, we're ready to roll with this because we already had our men and women of the police department test out the different body cameras. And they came up with what they felt was the most effective and useful equipment. So we've selected a user, we went out to bid. As soon as we get the, the go-ahead from the Attorney General's Office and the funding gets released, we'll be able to purchase these at a significant savings to the municipality. We won't have to pay for most of this out of pocket. We did run our third annual mayor's summer youth police academy. So that academy is put on by the police and fire, and it was a way to expose our youth to what it's like to be a police officer, what it's like to be a firefighter, what it's like to, to, to work in that capacity. Because we know it's harder and harder to get people to, to get into first responded roles or to get into the police and fire department. We want to expose our youth to the different professions. We're hoping that at some point, a seed that we plant will germinate into a full-time firefighter or police officer. We've also graduated a couple of detectives from our BCI school. And we, we held our very first public communications dispatcher academy. That academy was put on by our police and fire department because we were finding that we were hiring communications dispatches and putting them into the, the, the training role on-site. And they were having difficulty with it. This was a way for us to have an opportunity to teach potential candidates the basics, go over policy, and really to see if they are cut out to even make the, the list. So that kind of helps us weed out any potential weak candidates. But one of the most important things that we accomplished, I think Principal Rabello Costa will, will agree, is that we brought on a new member of the East Providence Police Department, Marty. The newest member of IPEPPD is a community comfort dog that has seen a lot of, a lot of action around the community, engaging with our old, older population, our younger population. And he brings a smile and comfort to everyone's, everyone who interacts with him. Human Resources was very busy. We did, we did a lot of hiring. There were a hundred and forty-two police applicants. This, this is, this is where most people don't understand how difficult it is to get police officers. Out of two drives, we had a hundred and forty-two police applicants. We had thirty-five that, that made it to the interview. I mean, that's, that's incredible. When you think about twenty years ago, there were thousands of people applying at the same time. We did try to, and we have been very successful in trying to increase our recruitment efforts through community outreach with NAACP, DLT, DOA, and Urban League, as well as the Progressive Center and local businesses. We also, the HR department was responsible for helping to go and actually negotiating with our law department, negotiating two contracts with the steelworkers and our EPPMTEA. So great work by our Solicitor's Office. Solicitor Marcelo is involved in all negotiations and our HR department. Economic development, I mean, I, I want to touch on this because there is so much going on in our city. And, and you saw earlier from the presentation on the redistricting, how in ten years, we only grew by a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-two people. That's all we grew. What, what does that mean? That means that people are staying in their homes as the younger population moves on. They want to find a place to live in East Providence, and they can't find it. I, I get those complaints all the time. So we, we've, we've seen a lot of development here. And one of the partners that we were dealing with is One Neighborhood Builders. They've acquired Sutton Place. There's going to be thirty-six units of affordable housing. They're spending millions of dollars in renovating all of those apartments. With that particular project, we have met the state goal of ten percent affordable housing. Further economic development is taking brownfields or undeveloped property and turning it into a, a great project. This project is off Dexter Road. It's a solar partnership that generates three point five million kilowatts of electricity, electricity yearly on a nine-acre former tank farm. So this is incredible, a, a really good development because that property now brings in two hundred eighty thousand dollars in new annual property tax to the city. And it also helps out Ripta, who partnered with them to purchase electricity at a much more affordable rate. Phillipsdale project is something that this community should be very proud of. It's in the Water, East Province Waterfront District Commission underneath their purview. And that property was just purchased by a developer for eight point three million dollars. This is a property that used to be vacant, it was empty. And over the last five years, the, the previous owners, with the help of the East Province Waterfront District Commission, were, were able to bring it to almost full occupancy. So, you know, we met with, we met with the, the owners, myself and Bill Fazio, we met with the owners. And he actually said that one of the reasons why he decided on this project and purchasing this project was that there was so much transparency with what was going on in the city through our social media use and our website that he felt that, you know, this, this city is willing and ready to work with developers. In that facility right now, you have NLTAP, Studio Dunn, Arkwood, We Share Hope, CrossFit Phillipsdale, and Amaro Custom Fabrication, just to name a few. East Point Development, you've heard about this ad nauseam. I'm not going to repeat it all, but what's, what's important to repeat or to, to mention is that this property has sat vacant for decades, not doing anything. You know, when we took office, administration got ready to work to see if we could move this project along. I am so grateful to the members of the council today who voted unanimously on that TIF. This, by the way, as I go over these projects, this is not one person who accomplishes this. This is a team effort. A lot of these things are only able to be accomplished because of the members on the council who support the administration's position on a lot of issues. But this one development, for instance, when we first took office, we sat down and met with the receiver. We met with the special master, and we really emphasized the importance of moving this project along. We want to see something happen here, and I'm so excited and happy to see that. This year, you're probably going to see a groundbreaking here, which will be, this will be a great addition to the city. The most important thing, too, and I know that this has been discussed up here, there will be ten percent affordable housing on this property. That's one of the things we, we want to strive for is more affordable housing. Even though we meet our ten percent requirement at the state level, we're adding more. There's nothing wrong with adding more affordable housing. East Province Arts District is something that we're super proud of. You know, through the help, through your efforts, the, the city council, our state legislation and our administration, we came together and was able to create a, a, it's East Province's first ever arts district, which is already seeing incredible results. So what the Arts District does is that it exempts artists who live in the district from state income tax on art that's created in the district and sold in the district. So that's, that's a, a real great incentive. As a result of this, as a result of what's going on, three rundown properties on Valley Street were purchased for three million dollars by the developer, who specifically said that this is what drove him here to East Providence. He invested three million dollars on three rundown property. And from my understanding is that there's more of those rundown properties that have been picked up and, and purchased for development. That Valley Street is within the Arts District. We've worked closely with East Province Arts Council. We funded, the council has funded public art, public art money to make sure that we have a nice public art campaign. You're going to see some incredible art being displayed. As a matter of fact, you see Jen Mahun standing before one of the projects that are going to be situated this year, later this year. It's, it's a, a public art piece that's unique. I don't, haven't seen any others around. It's a, it's a lighted tower that will allow for different art to be situated on it and displayed on it and then changed out every so often. It's really exciting. So we see a lot of great art projects coming up. Healthcare is big. I mean, we, this, in twenty twenty-one, we welcomed Pace R. I. to its new flagship headquarters. It provides wellness and services to elderly residents in our region. We have one of the oldest populations by, of populations i- in, in the state. When you look at the percentages here in East Providence, people stay in their homes long-term. And that's why you start to, you don't see our population growing because people stay there as their younger relatives move on. But this property was once a former vacant, Citizens Bank Call Center had been vacant for quite some time. Sixty-six thousand square foot facility, more than one hundred jobs came into East Providence, and ten point five million dollars was invested into that. Great new amenity to the city of East Providence and for its residents. Very exciting. The council authorized and approved and adopted a mixed-use overlay district to jumpstart redevelopment in commercial corridors. Once historic commercial corridors that, you know, you, you see some rundown or empty vacant storefronts. With this, a, a mixed-use overlay, it allows for greater residential development. We've already started to see some, some impacts of that with what's going on at the former Prince Source Building, where those residential units that would, it was a former commercial building, turned into half-commercial, a half-residential. All of those units are full and, and fully occupied, and the lower res, uh, commercial units are almost a hundred percent occupied. So, Totten Avenue, Waterman Avenue, Warren Ave, and Riverside Square are just some of those commercial corridors that have been positively impacted by the mixed-use overlay district. And once again, thanks to the council for passing that. You know, a lot, a lot of communities were having a difficult time during twenty twenty-one. We were in year two of the pandemic. But I'm proud to say that East Providence, we had a different experience. We, we saw new business growth at a time when many municipalities were seeing businesses shut down and people moving away. Mina's Brazilian Cafe in Takano, two ethnic restaurants opened up here in the city. They're both doing very well. I try to stop in there at least once a week to, just to say hello. Quick Fitting Holdings Company, which is a, is a manufacturing company, moved its headquarters from another municipality into East Providence on Waterman Avenue. Aquus Group, which is located on Waterman Avenue, just purchased a large commercial property on Commercial Way. They're going to expand their operation. We actually took a tour of that property, that business the other day. It's incredible what they do. Zoll Medical Group is, is coming into the city. The agency Piva is building a brand-new facility on, on Warren Ave at Bright Ridge. Royal Flush Plumbing moved their operation from out of state to East Providence in twenty twenty-one. And Fulton Speedworks is preparing to open up their business here, and they do, they do sailing boats. There's another huge development, Twenty-Five Fairmont Avenue. It's a hundred and eight thousand square foot industrial space that sold for five point eight million dollars last year. And that property is primed to be occupied in twenty twenty-two. But the, the business owners, they, they're keeping this under embargo until they're ready to make the announcement. But it's a significant company that will be moving into East Providence, bringing many jobs. And once again, expanding our tax base. We want to expand the tax base. Our East Providence Library was super busy despite, you know, having to deal with COVID and shutting down during certain periods. We serviced our community with virtually and doing outside events. We were able to get a grant of a hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars. That's the total competitive grants that they were awarded. We had virtual visits of a hundred thirty-one thousand visits. We ran eight hundred and forty-nine library programs, and there were about nine thousand, four hundred and thirty attendees at some of these programs. So very busy. The, the library did not slow down during the pandemic. They kept working. Our senior center held a welcome back celebration after being closed for eighteen months. We did hire a new healthy aging nurse who's doing an incredible job this year. She's pictured here. That's Shani, she's doing a great job. We did dedicate the senior center to the former director, Rob Rock. And, and we also managed, like I mentioned earlier, we managed the hotline. So the senior center had to, they, they had to deal with and, and flow with, with, with the, with the changes that we were dealing with. And they, they were very effective in dealing with the hotline. They received approximately a hundred thousand calls into our hotline. And those calls were usually people in the community who were just looking for service. They didn't know how to go about getting registered for vaccines and, and other things. So it's, it's a great accomplishment. By the way, in twenty twenty-one, we delivered or served seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one meals to East Providence's older population and disabled people. Our recreation department, despite this, this pandemic, they still were busy. You know, after-school program at the REC, we had eighteen after-school members. We did host a summer camp with a hundred and thirty-two campers. We also held, they, they organized and helped hold the eleventh annual Winter Fest Celebration, which was a rebound from the pandemic. There were probably approximately three hundred illuminated trees that are in honor of those that have passed. This year, they added a laser show and other family-friendly activities. Also, you know, we, we had to take a break from having our fireworks in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty-one, we had an incredible fireworks celebration, independent state celebration with the help of our recreation department helping to organize that. Most, if not all, I think approximately all of the performers were free. They came in and performed for free. They wanted to bring the community back and, and kind of put this whole thing behind us. That was a really nice event put on by the director. Carousel, despite being shut down, you know, they still put together some programs to keep people engaged, to keep our community involved and to raise funds. So the great Towny Pumpkin Festival was held, a trunk or treat was held, cruise nights were happening on Saturdays in May or September, and movies in the park. So a lot of great things happening at the carousel. And just to bring you an update, we are actively working on stabilizing that carousel, and we hope to have it open this year. Our IT department, you know, they were super busy dealing with making sure employees could work from home safely, setting up the COVID vaccination and testing sites. You know, that pod required a lot of IT support, and they were able to help set that up. They've also managed all important city meetings while we were doing them hybridly. And they worked on the fire department conversion symposium. The senior center received a new phone system and a new bingo machine. So if you haven't seen it, they've got an electronic bingo machine, which is incredible. Stop by, they, they set that all up, the whole thing up. The finance department was busy as usual. There's some of the data, but, you know, they, they put out twenty-seven RFPs and processed seven thousand, eighty-five purchase orders. And they handled fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four invoices. So it's a busy department, as well as doing all of the collections. You can see here, that's what they collected and how busy they were despite the pandemic. Our East Providence High School, I mean, there, there's nothing that makes me more proud than driving by that high school and seeing how that thing came to fruition and opened up officially this past year in twenty twenty-one. Despite the pandemic and, and this project's kicking off in the heart of the pandemic, they were able to build that school within two years. The city was involved in helping to secure funding. And because of some creative financing and because of some really advantageous interest rates, we saved our taxpayers about two point five million dollars a year in payments, in debt service payments. So that's significant, two point five million dollars a year. But it's really thanks to the, the Ephesus, the East Providence School Building Committee, which Councilman Mahun was a part of from day one. We're getting a seventy-four percent reimbursement from the state on all, on the educational aspects of the project. So very, very proud moment. And I get people from all over the state talking about this school, and people are now following our lead. Other communities want to be the next one to build a brand-new school. And we were the first one, I think, twenty, is it twenty years, to build a brand-new school, right, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
First community in twenty years. So it really, it takes a lot. It takes a lot to get something done. There's a lot of credit goes to the superintendent, school committee. By the way, one of our favorite members of school committees, they had Jessica Bochane. She was instrumental in seeing this project through. So very grateful to her and all the people that came out to support this project. Makes our city shine. Infrastructure improvements, you've heard about it, but just to share with the community, these projects are going to have an incredible impact on our, our city and the way tra- traffic comes to and travels through our city. So the new off-ramp from one ninety-five West onto Waterfront Drive is going to be a huge improvement to what happens at Broadway at the off-ramp right now. There's only one off-ramp coming from one ninety-five West from Massachusetts into East Providence, and everyone gets off at Broadway. That creates traffic nightmares at certain times during the day. We, we were lobbying from day one, lobbying our DOT partners and our federal legislators to see if we can get this thing funded. This is not something that we came up with. This is a project that had been talked about for many years, but we were actively, you know, asking... But we were actively uh uh, you know, uh asking our our partners to see if we can get this to become a reality. And when we got the money, announced that the money was coming for this, uh we were very excited because not only will this make traveling through the Washington Bridge. Much smoother, it's also gonna open up economic development opportunities along the waterfront. Uh people will be able to come off this off-ramp directly onto Waterfront Drive. And visit some of the beautiful amenities that are gonna be happening along our waterfront. Right? You know, in in a few years, in about five, six years. Uh you're gonna you're gonna see East Province become a destination spot where people are gonna wanna come from all over. To come enjoy the beautiful access to the waterfront that right now is not available. Henderson Bridge has been mentioned. We're very excited about that project. Um it replaces a six lane structure deficient bridge. Uh converts it and interchange to upgrade. So all that bridge structure is gonna be gone. Um it's gonna provide a separate bike pedestrian uh infrastructure to the bike path. But what's more most important is that it opens up land for future development. Land that's right now is tied up by onramps and by bridge structure. That land will become open. We've already started to see the Gulf property on Massasoia is gonna be the home of Honeybird Restaurants. That development is happening because the purchaser of that property realized what a huge impact this new bridge is gonna make to the area. So he purchased that property. He told me directly, he purchased that property because of the Henderson Bridge Project. And already we're seeing some some uh changes to that property. It was once a uh a contaminated property. Now you're gonna have uh a a nice vibrant uh development there eventually. Phase two, a- and just we can leave that up, but phase two Henderson Bridge, just to share with the council and the public. Is continuing from Massasoia to uh Broadway and beyond. Um and we're gonna be working with the DOT uh to put in for a a grant from the federal government to see if we can get funding to get that phase two done. Which would be taking that six lanes of highways and and turning it more into a two lane road with a park in the middle. And and connecting neighborhoods that have been divided by that highway structure. So you'll be able to connect one part of the neighborhood to the next neighborhood. So we're we're excited about that uh becoming a reality. Infrastructure improvement. Uh this is the city's third year of municipal street paving. We did ten point six uh ten point one six miles. And we plan on beginning the sidewalk renovations on Pawtucket Avenue this year. We've been working with our partners at DOT. As a matter of fact, I think we have a meeting tomorrow. Uh with Director Alvedian and some of his team because we're trying to get DOT to pick up portions of of this project. The council, thank you to the council who did allocate a million dollars in capital funds to make this project become a reality. And uh we are working closely with DOT to see if they'll pick up some of the share also. Twenty twenty two will be the fourth year of street paving and we hope to get to a lot of the streets that we weren't able to get to last year. Infrastructure improvement continues. I just like talking about some of the 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 things that we see out in public. Um our parks, we did a lot of improvements to our parks. Uh we're gonna be unveiling some uh with the Arts Council. Uh on March twentieth, by the way, if you're listening at home, we'd love to see you out there. We're gonna unveil some playful uh s- uh metal sculptures at Riverside Square along the bike path. The whole idea behind this project was to get families and children to stop, take a look, take photos. And observe what else is going on around Riverside Square. So when you're out there with your family and kids and you see these playful uh whimsical as a. As a director, Fazio, like I said, see this, these whimsical uh structures, when they they see them, stop for a minute. See what's going on. Check out some of the businesses. See what's going on in Riverside Square so that you can engage with some of the businesses that are there. Take a photo, post it on on social media, that kind of stuff. Um we made great improvements to Pierce Field. We did add a new splash pad, which was a huge big hit. It's it's wonderful to see uh grandparents with their kids carrying towels and beach bags, walking from the neighborhood. Uh right to right to the splash pad and that that's something special. We really are excited about that. Uh we added lights and and uh I think we completed the wiring at the uh Roderick's Field at Pierce. Uh we also uh contributed a large amount of money uh for the engineering and installation of the of the lights at the Kimberly Rock Field. Willa Pond, we made huge improvements and continue. We'll continue to make some improvements this year. As well as Grassy Plains Park, we made some major improvements there, which uh makes the park a friendly and nicer place to be. This is real quick, you all know about this, but you know, the 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 city of East Providence, uh their their water comes. From the situ- reservoir. We own the pipes, the transmission lines. That come from Budlong Road all the way across Cranston underneath Route one nine uh Route ninety five, underneath railroad tracks, underneath the bay to East Providence. Those pipes are what brings the water to East Providence for us to drink and use for other other needs, for washing, cooking and everything else. So those pipes hadn't had not been inspected in years, I think seventy or eighty years. We are now e- engaging in a in a process to inspect those pipes to make sure that they're secure. Uh Bristol County Water Authority, uh they completed the first phase of their backup water pipeline. They paid six point nine million dollars for the emergency uh pipeline that goes from uh their their access point, their pumps house. To the um the uh uh water tower at Ken Heights. So that's a a that not only helps Bristol County Water Authority, but it helps us should we lose our main source of water. It wouldn't give us the amount of water we need, but it would give us some water. So that pipe is a huge asset in making our water, our drinking water supply safer. Uh phase two, of course, is our partnership with Bristol County Water Authority to connect to the Pawtucket Water Supply. So that we'll have a truce, a true second source of water to service the people of East Providence. Very exciting. Infrastructure, wastewater, uh you know, after an eighteen month negotiation, the city with the help of Arcadis negotiated a new wastewater contract with Suez. Uh annual savings of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the ten year life of the contract. It's a two point five million dollar savings to the people of East Providence. So uh it was a good contract. One of the highlights, of course, is that we uh require that they they cover the clarifiers, the primary. Uh clarifiers that contribute to a lot of odor in the Riverside area around the treatment plant. So they are, and I spoke to our DPW director who's away uh today and couldn't be here, uh they have been working. They've been meeting with them and they plan on kicking off that project this year to start the work there. We've also started working and engineering uh to take care of the problems at the main. At at the main containment tanks that have deteriorated over the years. Uh and and it's also important, we had a presentation, but the public should know that many of the pipes, many of the sewer pipes that are underneath the ground that you don't see. They're seventy plus years old and they're made of vitrified clay. Um I've seen the videos. I know we've done a presentation here for the council, but for those people who haven't seen it, there are some pipes that have collapsed. To a point where we don't know where the water flow, where the sewage flow is going. So those need to be addressed immediately. We're putting together a plan to come to the council. Uh when that is uh when that is ready to go. By the way, we did work with the town of Barrington. Barrington is gonna pick up forty percent of the cost to repair the holding tanks. As you as you may uh be aware, uh part of the issue, the the deterioration of the concrete there was because of some of the. Higher sulfur uh readings in the Barrington sewage flow. Working on the infrastructure project that Rose Larissa Wall, uh we're we're getting close. Uh if you look at that photo at the bottom there. Those those granite blocks, we're looking to see if we can utilize them uh to build retaining walls along the Rose Larissa Park. Uh seawall. Uh those those same blocks were once at the the Two Rivers in Providence. When they moved the rivers to make Waterplace Park in Providence, they stored all those blocks behind Office Parkway on a right away. A piece of property that's owned by DOT. Uh so our contract has been out there sorting the blocks, putting them in different piles. And then we're gonna see if we can utilize those to make that retaining wall. Very exciting. Our streetlights should be kicking off this month. I know there's been a problem with supply line uh on getting some of the harnesses. But we hope to start hot and heavy this month to replace all of our streetlights. Uh as many of you know, and for those of you listening at home who do not know, East Province DOT National Grid reached an agreement that ended litigation. On who pays the streetlights on state roads. The the streetlights on state owned roads have been historically paid by the municipality. Uh we were suing to stop that and uh DOT National Grid and us came to an agreement. Uh with all the other municipalities involved, they also ma- uh are afforded the same agreement. And in twenty twenty one, we purchased those streetlights from National Grid for two hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. And we contracted with Rise Engineering to begin the the conversion process. There's five thousand two hundred streetlights. We're gonna be converting them all to LED. Annual savings uh to the taxpayers. Once this project is completely up and running, will be half a million dollars. So it's a it's a significant savings to our taxpayers. Community Center, um I know earlier today, we deobligated um a a a prior. Bond authorization that was put in place many, many years ago to build the city of East Province a community center. Well, whoever the city leaders were back then, uh they decided not to follow the will of the people of East Providence. They decided that they were not gonna follow through on that bond obligation that had been voted on and approved by the people of the city of East Providence. Uh imagine us doing that with the school, the new school bond, you know, i- it is it just makes no sense. But here we are today, uh looking at whether or not it makes sense for us to build a community center. Of course it does. Uh it makes a lot of sense. We've got uh an architectural group that's looking at uh the feasibility of building it. We hope, what we've started doing now is right now, we're meeting with our internal department heads who plan on having programs. Within this new facility, if we build it. And uh once we have a finalized plan and we meet again. We'll bring it to the public and to the council to get public input because we we wanna hear what people have to say about this uh potential new community center. FYI, uh the governor has put in uh for a request for about forty some odd million dollars. Uh to support community centers and we're hoping that we get a piece of that uh for our community too. So we feel that now is the time. We're in a position where we can actually build our city a true community center. A multi-purpose, multi-use community center. Community engagement, we spoke about this earlier, but you know, we did a lot of things during the pandemic. We wanted to boost morale. And uh we we did a lot of things to bring people together. The the Independence Day celebration was really special. And then we held the first of its kind memorial tree lighting in Holiday uh vendor bazaar. At City Hall, we closed off some of the streets. We had vendors. Uh we had families come in and memorialize their loved ones and they put up. Uh ornaments in memory of the people that they lost to COVID. We hope that this will be an annual uh event that will grow. And we hope that our Christmas bazaar will become bigger and bigger. And I wanna thank the council for voting on that ordinance change that. Uh negates or gets rid of the uh hawkers licenses going forward. Uh Councilman Roderick, I really appreciate your leadership on that. Thank you. Uh community collaboration, we've been working with members of of uh our community, friends of Grassy Plains Park, great group that came together. Actually, they were. Some of those members were introduced to me by Councilman Rado. Those those people have come together, formed the five oh one C. They've made great improvements to Grassy Plains Park and with the help of our planning department, applied for a grant, close to a hundred thousand dollar grant. That will help uh improve some of the walking trails within the park and and through the woods. Uh so we're very excited about that. Uh we also have been collaborating very closely with East Province Arts Council. They applied for a Bloomberg grant. Uh which we hope to see that project developed this year. Um it's it's an exciting project. Watchamoka Square, art installations are are coming up. Uh I mean, this is all collaboration with these pro- these organizations. We would not be able to do this without them. EP Urban Forest, they were able to apply for a grant with the help of one of our planners and they would did a tree planting at White Neck. Um and they also helped to fund through some grants uh grant writing, the first ever citywide street tree inventory. So we have a GIS now uh that we're happy to come, we're happy to have have somebody come and show you at some point. That lays out where every single tree is located, every single street tree in the city is located. And Rhode Island Tree Council also held its first ever uh Arbor Day festivities in East Providence. And they planted ten thousand dollars worth of trees at Health Street Playground. So that was nice and that was on their dime. They paid for that. Kettle Point, we accepted the donation from the Kettle Point uh from the Churchill and Banks. Uh the people who developed the the Kettle Point Project, uh one of the side benefits, of course, of this of these developments, especially when you're developing. These once former oil tanks, uh very contaminated properties is that we're creating new access to the community. To our waterfront. Uh this fishing pier was never available to the community and thanks to Churchill and Banks uh and their donation to the city. They rehabbed this fit, this fish pier, uh deeded it over to the city. It's now a city park. So it's really nice to see people using it. There we go. All right. So what's next? We got a lot of projects kicking off going vertical this year. Uh you know, these are, a lot of these projects started in twenty twenty one. Uh with site work. We got Wampanoag Meadows, we got the Newport Center, uh East Point that you guys are well aware of. Uh residents, the residents of Riverside Square, which is the former Bamco property, they're gonna be breaking ground this year. Uh which is a really unique project. It's affordable housing, but also transitional housing for people in foster care. So children who uh have aged out of foster care will now have a place to live. Uh and then the uh apartments at one forty five Waterman Avenue, which is a former industrial site. That's gonna get uh developed. It's gonna be really nice. Burnside Hopping, we are getting ready to award those uh on the RFP. Ivy Place is right across from City Hall. Uh that's gonna be breaking ground this year. A lot of these uh developments, Ivy Place specifically in the Bamco project, uh they had to, they had to get additional funding because the cost of materials went up and the cost of construction went up. So they had to petition the state and Rhode Island Housing for more funding. Uh Union Primary School. Um we're very close to turning that property over to a a developer. I think we got some approvals on it the other day at the zoning board. And the Bullpoint Residences, which was the addition to the former uh car lot at the bottom of Warren Avenue uh at the on-ramp. That second phase is almost done. We have some other commercial uh things that are happening up on Newport Avenue. We have a Popeyes that will be opening up, Honeybird Kitchen on Massasoia Ave, I mentioned that earlier. And Chase Bank on Pawtucket Avenue will be uh at the corner of Taunton Avenue and Pawtucket Avenue at the former gas station there. So that's a nice project. So here's what's going on a- as far as new businesses and expanding businesses in our city. Uh Cook Point Brewery, they've been working on that project and it's a a small family owned business. They've been working on that project for uh quite some time. The pandemic hit them hard like it hit anybody else. But they plan on opening up this year at on Massasoia Ave. It'll be our first brewery in East Providence. Incredibles is going at the former Gipes Meat Market on uh South Broadway. Nexans, this is a big project. You see this photo, this is what they do. They they make cable. And they are a leading supplier and and supporter of the IGUS uh. Uh IGUS Industries that's located here in East Providence and offshore wind. So with all the offshore wind that's going on uh off our coast, they moved their uh part of their operations from uh another state. To East Providence, which means, once again, uh good paying jobs and broadening our tax base. And we always love to see industry coming into these products. Uh BSM Pump is gonna be at Narragansett Park Drive. Uh the drip bar across the street will be opening up soon and Thompson Insurance on Waterman Avenue. This is an exciting project I wanted to share with the with uh the public. Uh we went out to uh uh try to develop. Our senior center grounds. Uh some of the seniors had reached out and and our senior center director had reached out regarding. The walkways and pathways that are at the senior center, they're all in bad shape. You know, it's kind of tripping hazard in some places. But we looked at it and we have a uh, this is from a a landscape architect who gave us this plan. Uh we're gonna go out to RFP to get some pricing. This is being funded primarily with CDBG funding. Uh what's cool about this development is that we are adding a pickleball court uh for our seniors to use. Um we'll have some little areas, lots of trees will get planted, lots and lots of trees. Uh we'll have a couple of uh rain gardens and we'll have some uh areas where people can sit and enjoy uh the the grounds. So we're very excited about that. We hope to break ground on this project this year. So, I mean, twenty twenty one was a blur. It went by so fast and 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 we still managed to get a lot of things happening. Uh real quick, and I mentioned some of these in some of the other slides, so I won't uh repeat it. But I spoke to the owners and the developers of the property um uh abutting Bullpoint Park. Bullpoint Park has been the home to uh Bullpoint Concert Series, of course, sometimes Live Nation's have been running some uh shows there over the last few years. They plan on running shows there this year again, but they wanna break ground on the parcel that they own next door to build. A outdoor pavilion similar to what they have in Boston uh at the the Leader Bank Pavilion. If you Google Leader Bank Pavilion. That's what they're trying to build on our waterfront, which would be incredible. We're also looking at making major improvements at Bullpoint Park. We have already submitted um application to CRMC. Uh to do some paving and some uh some planting and also uh at the addition of a kayak launch. Uh that kayak launch is being paid for by um Chevron, I believe, or or PNW. I'm I'm not sure exactly which one, but it was the prior, the previous. Uh property owners. Part of the deal was that they would pay for that. So uh we're excited about that. And also, uh Rhode Island Waterfront Enterprises and Live Nation are gonna be contributing quite a bit to. to the improvements at Bullpoint Park. They've already contributed a lot by providing the engineering work. They hired an engineer who came in and did all the engineering work. They've been working with our DPW Director and Deputy Director to make sure that everything's done the right way. But we'll be coming to the council with some information on that shortly. Mentioned the road paving that's going to happen, VAMCO, the VAMCO Building in Riverside. And also we're going to start working on, we're hoping to break ground on the parking on Warren Avenue across from the old Oddfellows Home. That that's a project that we're working on, trying to get some engineering done on that, that's a little bit more complicated sometimes than than you think, it's not just paving over, you got to do all the engineering work and and water retention on site. Jones Pond, I know that's come up in discussion in the past. We have some great plans for Jones Pond, we put some air raiders at Willard Pond that were a huge success and we plan on putting some air raiders at Jones Pond. We plan on dealing with some of the grasses that are growing there and some of the landscaping that needs to be done. So that's a project that's on the on the forefront and will be taking place this year. Last but not least, the future is bright for East Providence. The primary goal of our administration is to have East Providence realize its fullest potential. It's working together with all of you and I ask all of us to continue working together. So that 2022 promises to be a year of unprecedented economic growth. Thank you to our community, the city council especially, because a lot of this would not be possible without your input, your ideas and 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 the funding that you make available for us. Our department heads who worked tirelessly to make sure that these projects come to fruition and all of our city staff for everything they've accomplished in 2021. The the document that we had originally was much more encompassing than this, we tried to shorten this up, believe it or not. And I know it's late and I appreciate that the council allowed me the opportunity to come and speak before you. I'm probably, like Council President mentioned, one of the days we had more presentations than you have had in in quite some time. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them the best I can. That being said, I thank the council and we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gonzalez.
The next item is Women's Day, Women's Month Proclamation and Remarkable Women.
Do you have the proclamation readable?
You're not going to have to read this.
City of East Providence Office of the Mayor would like to proclaim the International Women's Day in Women's History Month, whereas on March 8th is International Women's Day, the month of March is Women's History Month. And whereas International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural and political achievements of women and International Women's Day is a collective day of global celebration, a call for all. The United States President Barack Obama proclaimed March 2011 to be Women's History Month, calling Americans to work to mark International Women's Day by reflecting on the extraordinary confidence of women in shaping the country's history. And during Women's History Month, we honor the women who sacrifice and strive to ensure all people are in equal opportunity. Thank you.
Your next item is Flag Day, celebrating St. Patrick's Day and Irish Heritage.
Do you have that as well? So this Thursday, we'll be celebrating St. Patrick's Day with a flag raising. The Governor McKee, as well as Lieutenant Governor Sabrina Mathos will be in attendance. We welcome all the city council, all members of the public for the public flag raising. Okay, the St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
Alright, that concludes new business on the mayor communications. We're going to move right on down to reports of other city officials. Mr. Solicitor, would you like to take it from there?
Sure, thank you, as you know, the city council met as a claims committee and executive session prior to this public session to review the following claims and following results. The claim of Matthew McNulty in the amount of twenty-three hundred dollars was denied by the city council. The claim of Jason Ellis and Mimosa for seventy-five hundred dollars was referred to the route into local trust, the city's insurance carrier. Claim for pothole damage of Miss Maria Piver in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents approved. The claim of for pothole damage or property damage to vehicle of Mr. Don Popopolo, excuse me, was denied on the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents. The claim of Cynthia Sampson in the amount of six, five hundred and sixty-five dollars for sewer backup and resulting property damage was approved. And last but not least, the claim for a personal injury as a result of an accident with a city plow was referred to the city, excuse me, city's insurance carrier because of the lack of unspecified damages. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor, we'll move right on down to resolutions.
First resolution is the resolution authorizing the purchase of required firefeder equipment. The sponsor is Council Vice President Roderick.
Mr. President, we continue to have leaders in our fire service bar bar none in Rhode Island. They have taken the the lead with the pandemic and other things, keeping the community safe. And now as we go into a period with the Fire Academy coming up, there are some required expenses. Chief, I'm sorry, I should have suggested earlier that you come up before the mayor's proposal. But you can come in fifteen minutes late tomorrow to work, if that's okay with the council. This is required gear, which I'm sure the chief can explain. It is budgeted money that was budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two for, I believe, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and we're coming in through a combined bid service at a lesser amount. And it's a requirement, chief, and the money is budgeted.
Yes, it is.
And I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, it's pretty straightforward. You know, we want to save time if there aren't any questions. Chief, what are the, what are the equipments you're looking to purchase?
It's fire gear, fire gear for the next academy.
Oh, okay. It's like fire coats, fire pants.
Honest, honest, gloves, boots.
If it's not a public hearing, I'd move approval.
It's not a public hearing?
That's a motion, man.
That's a motion, would anyone like to second that motion? And this is budgeted already, you said, Councilman?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a second, Deputy Clerk, maybe we have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Captain.
Next resolution, please.
Next resolution is the resolution requesting the Rhode Island General Assembly to pass legislation, which authorizes the city to delay the implementation of the most recent revaluation without penalty. Sponsor is Councilman Mahon.
So the purpose of this resolution, I don't think we need to read it, unless anybody wants us to read it. Last year, 2021 was our three-year evaluation. We have to do it every three years per state law. 2021 was a statistical reevaluation, which means it's basically based on numbers, not on actual assessment of of properties. As you would imagine, and I don't think it's any surprise to anybody here, residential properties values increased greatly. We saw a huge demand for residential properties as people kind of ran from the office and started working from home in their home offices. And we saw a corresponding not-so-good commercial market. So the commercial market valuation is based largely on sales. People were running from office spaces, meaning they were running from somewhere. So largely they were coming out of a lot of these commercial spaces which weren't selling, which thereby were not increasing in value, creating an imbalance between the residential properties and the commercial properties, which is not something you would see in a typical non-COVID year. There are a number of communities in Rhode Island that are currently in this boat, most notably Warwick. And said communities have reached out or are in the process of reaching out by way of resolutions through their city councils to the General Assembly who set the law that says the appraisal schedule must happen when it does. So what this resolution does is it makes a request to the General Assembly to essentially delay our assessment to allow some of these fluctuations to resolve. And so our folks sitting in residential properties don't see themselves get whip-sawed with huge increased assessments in the coming year. That said, I don't know if you all want to take over. Oh, okay, so if I missed anything, please let me know.
Could I just interrupt? So thank you for that explanation, that's accurate. When this resolution was originally prepared, we had had reached out to the General Assembly and the original the original plan was to get the General Assembly to delay the assessment for two years until till our next full revow, which was December thirty-first, 2024. Right before this meeting, I got a call through the mayor's office that the the General Assembly would like us, in accordance with what other cities and towns are doing, actually just delay it one year until December thirty-first, 2023, would that be the next assessment date for us? Twenty-twenty-two, so one year, so we're just going to, so the the resolution says December thirty-first, 2024. I would ask that you please amend it to rate, to to make it December thirty-first, 2022, so that would be the new assessment date.
Yeah, specifically the paragraph that the solicitor is referring to is the second to last one.
Correct, under the now there foreclause, right, so make that amendment, that would be, and then we can pass it as amended. And that was because there was, I guess, there's a little appetite to delay it two years at the General Assembly and other towns, they want to make it sure that if we're going to do this, we're going to do it consistently. And other towns are doing it for one year, so they've asked everyone to do it for one year as well.
And there is appetite for taking this on with the
Based upon my conversation with the House leadership, there was an appetite because of of the what they consider to be a not great market analysis because of the uniqueness of COVID and how that affected the market rates of the assessments.
Councilman Mahon, this, plenty of other municipalities that are doing the same, correct?
I don't know about plenty, Councilman Murato, I know for sure Warwick. I believe there are two others, but I'm not a hundred percent sure what they are because we're not all on the same cycle. Malcolm, I don't know if you have that information?
I just wanted to share with the council. I did speak with Mayor Polisina from Johnson today. He's asking the General Assembly to do it for one year, delay also. And I think there's some other municipalities that are still weighing whether or not they're going to do so. Right now it would be Warwick, ourselves, and Johnston. And not every municipality has a statistical revaluation this year. So that's just out of the number of municipalities that have one this year. Do you know the number of how many this year? Like usually a third of the municipalities, so we we are three out of that third.
Just so everyone understands, the assessment that will be used if this, if the bill passes would be the assessment on the property that was done twelve thirty-one eighteen. So that would be the last assessment.
Twelve thirty-one eighteen would be extended through another year.
Correct.
We did receive an email from the state today. They've heard communities are interested in this, so we did receive something saying, you know, we've heard about this, so they wanted to get a better count of it to see where this is going. And we, when we were looking at this, even in Connecticut, the State House, they had put a proposed legislation to put something in sort of a blanket that says, hey, because of this, we'll leave it up to the individual cities and towns if they wanted to differ one year.
Really?
So it seems to be becoming a little more prevalent this year.
So before we discuss it, can I make the motion to make that? Alright, so I'm going to move to amend the resolution before us to specifically change the second to last paragraph, the paragraph beginning now therefore be it resolved. And the amendment would be to change the date that appears there from December thirty-first, 2024 to December thirty-first, 2022.
And Councilman, that is a motion?
It is, sir.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
Second that motion.
We have a second on the motion, Deputy Clerk, and we have a roll call vote.
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, that was to amend the date from twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So with that said, I move to approve the resolution requesting the Rhode Island General Assembly to pass legislation which authorizes the city to delay the implementation of the most recent reevaluation without penalty.
Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, and this will revert back to twenty eighteen. Very good. Thank you. Resolution, please.
Next resolution is the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Equipment Inc. for the installation of a new interior sprinkler system for the Department of Public Works complex located at sixty Commercial Way, the sponsor is Councilman Mahon.
This is part two of the ordinance we approved earlier, which allocated additional funds for that sprinkler project. This authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract to get the project done.
Move to approve.
Second.
Deputy Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mahon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance, please.
Introduction of ordinances for discussion and possible vote. The first is an ordinance in amendment of chapter twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended entitled Police. The summary requires the city council authorization related to the use, funding and regulation of automated license plate readers. The sponsor is Councilman Murato and Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you. There is a couple of seconds that I would like to amend and then put this out to a vote. However, I just want to explain the history as to how we got here from the original resolution that was presented a couple of months ago. As I have mentioned before and I have spoken to some of the EP members, including the chief, and I will explain this again. Yes, I am a police officer in the town of Bristol, I'm a sergeant. I perform duties such as recruitment to policy writing to accreditation. As a cop of twenty-one years, twenty-four total in law enforcement, three-counting prison time that I did as a CO, not as a resident. I I I hear, I hear you, I get it. This is a good tool. However, the residents of East Providence are suffering camera fatigue right now. As soon as they heard that sixteen more cameras were going to be installed, that's all they heard, they don't want to hear anything else after that. I put a poll out, I invited residents to look at the technology themselves, educate themselves, numerous phone calls, numerous email responses and a community meeting that I did. And the first thing they talk about first is the speed cameras. For me to honestly go against the public's wishes, and as I mentioned, first of all, I am a cop, my, you know, day job, I got elected here as a councilman, I served the people in my ward that elected me, I keep saying that, and I truly believe that. But I also look at the benefits of that camera and how do you balance the two? Well, if I was to vote in favor of this, if I were to vote in favor of this, I know I would take a lot of heat from the residents that are opposed to it. For a lot of them, for for many reasons other than it's, you know, another sixteen cameras. What this would do for me, and I think it would be good public policy, it's to say, look, these cameras are in place, but here are some of your protections that are set almost, not in stone, but set firmer than a policy, which by the way, I think it's a great policy. However, a policy, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, doesn't have a procedure for changing. It doesn't have a mechanism for public opinion, public advertisement, advertisement of whatever changes might occur. There's a little bit more thought into an ordinance and changing an ordinance. I'm going to use an example that's currently taking place right now, Senate Bill twenty-five-ten. It's a, they're trying to put this bill through right now that allows municipalities to not only install cameras in public schools, but also in other areas in the municipalities that municipalities install cameras in public uh schools, but also in other areas in the municipalities that municipality feels that speed camera should go into place. Well, what if we were, what what if we did have a a an ordinance that only restricted to the intended purpose of schools? State can amend whatever statutes they want. Doesn't mean we have to adopt that. Doesn't mean that an administration or a council can say, you know what, we're gonna put now, now we're gonna put cameras on secondary streets, speed cameras, that is. So that would be a protection with an ordinance. It's the same as to what I'm trying to do here. I'm not trying to restrict the police, and I did hear the union president, uh, last time he came up. I get it. I will, I will amend, as I will discuss in a in a few minutes. The two sections that were a major concern, um, and I thank them for pointing that out to me. I was looking at it from a different different lens. But this will also protect from those additional technologies that the the company may offer down the road. Oh, by the way, East Providence, you don't have, you know, facial recognition. By the way, East Providence, you know, yeah, we can pick up pedestrians that, you know, have conversations underneath one of these cameras. Well, this will eliminate that. The the company can do all the updates they want. We don't have to adopt that. In fact, we're not going to adopt that if this ordinance was passed. Uh, there's a little bit of transparency in it. Talks about transparency. I just feel that it it comparing the ordinance to the policy, it's it's not restrictive. It's just setting those proper guidelines. Um, one of the area, one of the areas that I would like to amend is section twelve dash five six. A, uh, right after A, a triple I, I would like to add another section that's directly out of the policy from page two, Roman nu- Roman numeral number six, procedures, section D. So I would like to add on the uh triple I, uh, the next um, on the section twelve dash five six. A, right after those those three, a fourth line, right out of the policy, page two, Roman numeral six on the procedures. And it's going to be D where it reads partial license license plates and unique vehicle descriptions reporting during major crimes. Um, plenty of examples uh used as, you know, uh, you know, you got a bank robbery of some sort, and you only get a partial plate and a partial ve- vehicle description. I know this technology will be able to, if driven by one of those cameras, to pick up that vehicle and that license plate. I get that. In the proposed ordinance, uh, section B.
Down, so we have it. So can you just give me that language, a parcel license plate? Yep.
Yep. So I'm taking the language right out of the policy uh on the procedures, page two, section D.
Okay.
And it states partial license plates and unique vehicle descriptions reported during major crimes.
So partial license plate and unique vehicle?
Descriptions reported during major crimes.
Thank you.
So that would be the the purpose, stolen vehicles, vehicles associated with wanted, missing, or endangered persons. You can strike the or, and then it goes into vehicles that register as a match within a national crime information center. And then add the or, and then the line that I just.
I was actually, I thought you said we could just come add that as a four, a little little four.
Correct. I'm just reading it so you can know exactly what it is.
All right. So this this last, okay, just want to make sure I know where it's going. Okay, thank you.
So Councilman Murato, that just adds a fourth, that fourth item to that. Okay. All right, for for accuracy, changing the or from the second to last to the.
Do you want to do this one at a time, or do you want to, I think that'd be just better for us for the record. So if you're making a motion to amend it to add that language?
I make a motion to amend the section uh on the proposed proposed ordinance, section twelve dash five six, to include a fourth. Um, I don't know what that number would be.
It's four. A, it would be A, oh, four, yep.
On the A operation, where it starts off as operation and pro- uh and access.
And just so I'm clear, it it's from page two, uh, uh, page two, uh, Roman numeral six, D, from the chief's policy that he passed out last month, last week?
Correct.
Okay.
And to be consistent with the current language in the proposed ordinance, it stops at crimes.
Okay, thank you.
Second that.
Councilman Kahoon?
Uh, aye, I'm okay with the amendment.
Well, was it, is there going to be a discussion on this before we vote?
This is just to amend.
To amend?
Yeah.
I I honestly don't know what I'm.
Okay, so um, so under the uh re- regulated uses of automated license plates, which is under section twelve dash fifty six, currently statute reads, operation and access to the automated license plate reader shall be for for official law enforcement purposes only, and shall only be used to scan, detect, and identify license plates members for the for the purposes of identifying. Now, currently it says stolen vehicles, vehicles associated with wanted, missing, or endangered persons, or vehicles that register as a match within the National Crime Center. And this added will also be to use for for purpose of identifying partial license license plates, sir?
Correct. Partial license plates and unique vehicle descriptions reported during major crimes.
So par- partial license plates and unique vehicle descriptions reported during major crimes. So that will be at, that'll be a new subsection four of this ordinance if passed.
So chief, is that any different from what you have already?
Well, it's coming from our policy, so, I mean, we do have that line in our policy. I'm not sure, exactly sure what you're asking, though.
Okay. No, I I wanted to make sure that that was part of your policy, or is that something that you are fully aware of as well?
Uh, yeah, it's in our policy. I'm I'm aware of that line in our policy, yes.
All right. So you have a motion, and we're seconding it. Uh, we have a vote. Who's the party that voted already?
Kahoon.
Yeah. Okay, you want to proceed with the vote?
Yes, Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
The second amendment, the second change I would like to make uh on the section again, twelve dash five six, B, paragraph number two. I'm going to uh strike that whole paragraph uh because the language that we just voted on takes care of that. It would contradict itself, so that paragraph under section twelve dash five six uh B, paragraph, B is in Boston, paragraph number two. Where it starts off like uh by photographing or recording, I would like to strike that po- uh photograph, uh, sorry, that paragraph.
Entire section?
Correct. And chief, that's something you have outside of your uh perimeters as well?
No. So we don't include that section anywhere in our policy. That section right there pretty much bans um a majority of the functionality of the camera. Um, that section uh would not allow us to go into the system after the fact to search for a vehicle.
As you discussed in the last.
Yep.
And is that what you're striking?
Correct. I'm striking that, and I, the vote, the previous vote enables that function.
And this is to amend the language, by the way. So we'll just hold off on Councilman Kahoon for this vote.
So, uh, just for explanation, so A, some paragraph A tells you what it can be used for, some paragraph B says what it can't be used for. And I believe the councilman's amendment would strike B two in its entirety, which it cannot be used for.
Okay, you might want to explain that over again for Councilman Kahoon.
Sorry, man, I can't hold it.
All right, so um uh, some some par- some paragraph A of the ordinance uh tells you, tells the city and the police department what the use of license plates readers can be used for. And as you know, we just added another section. Subsection B uh states what the automated license plate reader shall not be used for. In other words, it prohibits the department from using it, the the camera for certain purposes. One of the purposes that it used to say was that you could not use it for photographing or recording or producing images of of further identifying features of a vehicle, including but not limited to bumper stickers, paint color, or other unique aesthetic details. By Councilman Murato's um amendment, he's striking that provision in its entirety.
So I'm motion to uh approve striking that section.
Second. Deputy clerk, discussion, there a discussion on this first? So chief, that's, we're not at the final step yet, but so that's something you would want to have that stricken.
Right, just to clarify.
Yep.
So the, an automated license plate reader shall not be used for. What's going to be stricken after that is one, two, three, four, and five?
No, sir, just two, just two.
Section two, okay. Um, okay, I mean.
So sequentially, as we do this, that's livable with with you. I mean, it's not the final. This is just amended the line.
Right.
It's not a vote for an ordinance. So we do have a motion. We're seconding it. Um, just start the roll call.
Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
The next section that I would like to discuss and uh probably possibly change is going to be twelve dash fifty eight, remedies and penalties in the proposed ordinance. Twelve dash five eight. That's the last section. So the language uh that's proposed, it's in that first paragraph, A, changes. Uh, any person affected by violation of this ordinance. As you know, the uh, the stricken uh language from last time, it's still in front of you. However, the added would be de- highlighted, including by the utilization of, and then it goes into automated license plate readers uh in a manner of uh manner or for a purpose that is not authorized herein, may institute proceedings for injunctive relief and declar- declaratory relief in any court or competent jurisdiction.
We don't have a highlighted version. We don't.
We didn't, we don't. Any changes to this section last time? The only thing that we added was that uh.
Correct. So what I'm proposing is, actually, what I would like in this section is I would like to have a little dialogue with the council, all right? Now, chief, I know that you have in in your policy, page four, permitted uh impermissible uses F. Uh, I do like that language. It covers uh any, anyone who engages in any impermissible use of the ALPR system or associated scan files or hot lists may be subject to criminal prosecution, civil liability, and or administrative sanctions pursuant to and consistent with the collective bargaining agreement and department policies. I do like that language. I would actually, if this passes, to also include, uh, you know, city ordinances as part of that. Um, but I would like to hear from the council if there's anything that you don't like about that section. I mean, you, what I, what I'm proposing to add would be either take that language from the chief's policy and replace it with that paragraph A or tweak it a little bit. So I don't, do we have one from you as well, chief?
Uh, the policy?
Other than the draft that you sent us?
That was the only one I sent, is is the the draft one.
Okay, where is that in relation to what's being presented tonight? As far as the language is concerned, is it entirely different? Last week, last meeting, it was entirely different.
So.
Where do we stand with with the comparison of what you had, which with the police department's looking for versus what the ordinance was reading?
Well, we, we weren't, I wasn't really looking for anything in the ordinance. Uh, I, uh, my position is that.
You just didn't want it at all?
Uh, right, right. I, uh, strong objections to the ordinance. I made that known to everyone.
Okay.
Appreciate the the attempt to compromise here. Um, but I think in ordinance governing our uh way of uh doing business, utilizing our tools is is not appropriate. Um, you know, we're going to have other technological things coming down the road like body cameras. I know the ACLU has a lot to say about the how body cameras are used. We're going to have a um, you know, and and they're going to cap- capture a a lot more um, you know, uh, type of more intimate conversation than these cameras, and we are bound to abide by the policy that's going to be distributed by the Attorney General's Office. So my thought process is, w- we don't, we can't have an ordinance governing, you know, something like that. And I see, I I kind of view that in the same way as this. So again, I, for all the reasons I had mentioned, I don't want to belabor it. Um, but for all the reasons I mentioned at the last meeting and that I had emailed you all of my correspondence, I still feel very strongly against any type of ordinance.
Chief, the uh the body worn cameras, which I am currently putting a policy together for my own department. Uh, as we know, uh, in order for us, the municipalities to receive, you know, the money, the grants or whatever, to buy those cameras, which are very costly, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars per person with docking fees and cloud and stuff. In order to get that, you're correct, you have to adopt the Attorney General's uh policy, which is two items right now in 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 being contested. The fact that your officer can review the uh footage, probably doing report or not. And I believe another section is uh, I think it's telling to you, every person you come encounter and encounter that you're being recorded. That's the only way that you're going to receive, and there may be changes to that, those the grants, the funding. But as a municipality, you don't have to adopt that policy. As a municipality, we don't have to adopt the trust use of force policy that we pretty much all have in the same. We, every municipality insured by the trust had to adopt, and you can still make minor changes in tweaking it to fit your municipality. It's not unheard of to have ordinances on speed cameras. Providence has them. Providence has been through the fire with that. I mentioned this, you know, when we were voting on the speed cameras, why not at least do a policy? I mean, an ordinance, same with the traffic cameras. The fact of the matter is, and you were right when you said to me one time that uh, had you gotten two or three cameras, we wouldn't even have this this discussion because it wouldn't require council approval. That's correct. But the fact of the matter is, it was put out to the public. They see cameras on the agenda. I stock any question. I I look into it. I do my due diligence as a councilperson. I don't see any difference or harm in having a ordinance that sets things a little firmer than a policy. Policy is, the policy is great. I I have I have no issue with the policy. But the policy doesn't have the same process as an ordinance, and this is where I'm coming from. I'm not restricting, and the changes that we're making here tonight, it's it's not restricting you from the goal, the intended purpose of what your policy, uh, the intended use of those cameras. So.
So we, you know, again, I'm not going to labor it. I I respect your point of view. Um, we we look at these things very differently. Um, and I still, I am very much opposed to to this ordinance.
So is is the ACLU in favor of the body cameras?
They are, I'm not going to really speak for the ACLU, but.
I mean, have they publicly?
What I've, what I've seen is they're for the body cameras, but um, you know, in a very the way they want the body cameras to be used. So, um, yeah.
Because I I just look at it as a camera's a camera regardless of where the camera is. So whether it's, I'm wearing it on my chest, or whether it's at a intersection, uh, come in and to a city or out of the city, a camera's a camera.
Right, and I just.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. Chief, um, I mean, we're making some some changes on the fly. I think some some good uh attempt that compromise, to use your word, but now, I mean, we only got a draft from you. Have you seen any of these changes before tonight? Do we, do you need some time to maybe come back to us with? What's that? Yes, I know.
So I I this.
So regardless of any change, even if the ordinance resembled your policy word for word, no changes, you're still against?
I am against it. I I do not think it is appropriate to have an ordinance, um, you know, governing governing this for all the reasons I, you know, put in my correspondence to you and um, you know, the 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 conversations I've I've had with everyone here. So, yeah, I am.
Do we have any other ordinances governing police or fire policies? No, but we have state statutes, federal sta- standards, uh, post certifications and everything else that governs every single one of our tools from pepper spray to, you know, how you operate a motor vehicle in pursuits, daily operations, and everything else. And as I said, if this if this ordinance was completely different And as I said, if this if this ordinance was completely different. And minimizes the what the intended purpose and the policy, then I there's a point there, but. It does the exact same thing, and it's good public policy and good public peace of mind. Is what I'm trying to do.
I want, can I ask you, Councilman, you you said. You know, wearing your Councilman hat, you're against the cameras in general. And people you've met with are against it. So. If your ordinance passes, are you going to support?
Yes, I am. I said.
Cameras.
Correct. Knowing full well that I am going to. You know, take the brunt from the people that I represent who are so against the cameras. Just because they hear cameras. Most of them, ninety percent of the people that have contacted me, as I mentioned, camera fatigue. I also mentioned that state. Uh Senate bill that's currently being discussed into adding. Outside of just school zones, more cameras. So. If, example, if we had an ordinance that said. You know, school zones, then it's restricted to school zones only. This is restricting a lot of these. Other added technologies like the facial recognition, the picking up pedestrian conversations and other stuff that are in here. To give those protections, because obviously that's not what we want as a police department. But we do want this to to solve the crime aspect of it. You know, pick up those stolen vehicles, amber alerts, silver alerts.
So what is in your proposed ordinance now that is not in the police policy?
The section that varies uh that changes a little bit is the remedies and penalties. And the section that talks about the uh facial recognition, uh pedestrian, um. Actually, it's in a twelve dash five six, for example, B. Paragraph three, recording, photographing or recording. Or procuring images of passerby or pedestrians, including and photographing, recording. Or producing or image of of images which may identify biometric information about such passerby or pedestrians through the use. Usage of facial voice, iris or other software. And other. You know, if you keep reading this, there's other elements in there that. If these technologies are added to this flock feature. We're not adopting that. We're not using that. I think that gives a public. A sense of. Peace of mind, you know, I mean, when these are. And the stats to the transparency part of it too. And Chief, you do have some uh mechanisms in there to have audits done, and I I agree, and I like that. But when the public starts to see, you know, the car that was picked up for, you know, a robbery, the stolen vehicle. I think they're going to get it. I'm banking on that. And for those that don't, they're also going to get that. You know what? At least we have this to protect us.
And and just so to piggyback off some of this, so it's really, it's not to say that things can't be changed, right? We amend ordinances all the time depending on the changing in the community, right? So if something comes down the line and we, along with the police department administration, feel like it would be beneficial for our community. To keep our community safe, it is then something that the council can collectively revisit, have a discussion. Open to the public where it's very transparent in the conversation and then adopt those tools. As opposed to any type of policy which are changed and we as a council are not generally aware of unless, you know, somebody gets. You know, a call or discussion privately. Um. And the public's not made aware of it until something occurs, and then they're looking for answers. When did this happen? Why this happened? Why didn't anybody tell us? So it's just a level of public policy that. Ensures that we as a body are informing the public of what's to come, have safeguards. In place for the community and then can work with the public uh with the the police department in making some of this. Happen. Um, it's not in any way to take any power away from anybody, because again, the chief has his rights to do his own policy in addition to this. But it is public policy, which the police department doesn't have rights to make. That's not their role. They make department policies. Not public policy. That would be our role. Um, and so it's really a a form of transparency. And can be changed as needed, just like we do with zoning and with planning. When we feel like we can improve something in the community, we have a discussion, we put it out to the public, we make them aware, they give feedback. And that's that's the process of it.
So wh- where I'm at right now, where what I think I'm hearing is um. Straight black and white language. We're kind of all on the same page. Ball, it's almost the chief's policy. In the ordinance, but I'm hearing our chief of police say it's kind of micromanaging on our part. Over over his department. So that's my conflation here.
And I'd also like to see, you know. Remedies and penalties. I know we struck a section out, but I don't.
No, we are modifying that one. I was, I just wanted to. Get the input from the council.
Okay, so that that's another very, you know, concerning part of. Uh. In ordinance, I mean, as it is, it's extremely vague. Um.
Are you talking about the just paragraph A?
I'm talking about. The whole remedies and penalties, you know, uh section. Um. Yeah, it 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 talks about, it gets into turning things over to the defense, um, you know, in certain sections. I mean, it's just.
Isn't that done through discovery anyways?
But that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about, right, it is. It's done through discovery. Um, but this is talking about if we're found to be hanging on to these photographs like we're not supposed to be. It has to be turned over to the defense. So that would all need to be adjusted.
Um, if if there's a complaint by the by uh the defender uh defense.
Right, so anyone can come in and make a complaint. It happens all the time. And can say we misused. Actually, it's going to be a section you struck out, so it has to align. The remedies and penalties would have to align with what you're striking out.
But there's also in policy and in the ordinance that the information will only be kept for thirty days, so that kind of cancels itself out.
No, not necessarily. It's saying. In in the remedies and penalties, it's saying that any data or other information created or collected in contravention of this chapter. Basically, we have to turn over to the defense. So that all needs to be. Reorganized. And if. An officer, if someone claims an offer officer has misused. The system. Is there a remedy and penalty that we have to impose upon this officer via um city ordinance? I mean, I just I just.
But that's not in there as to uh which section does it say that the officer is going to be penalized for violating the policy?
That would be something internal you would have in your own policy.
It's setting rem, it's sending penalties here. It's setting penalties against the police department that we have to do certain things and give certain things to the defense in a criminal prosecution. I it's just overstepping the bounds of an ordinance.
But we have the same with Rilets. We have rules, we have penalties, as you know. You know, Mr. Rilets system.
If we violate Rilets, we don't have to give, we we take certain actions. It's not covered by an ordinance that we have to give to the defense.
But either way, I wanted your input on these on this section. I was. Asking for it. And the end result was, it doesn't matter what we change, put in, take out, they're not going to support the ordinance anyways.
Right.
So I was I was left, I was left to take what was heard here at the last council meeting, taking your points, taking the union's points. Coming back and trying to, at least on my own blindly. Trying to change it to make it a compromise.
And I appreciate that, but I also told you too.
I get it, and but either way, you're not going to change, you're not going to agree to it. So what I would like to do with the council is this, instead of relaboring this. Does the council have any appetite to change any of this, or should I just make a motion to pass? Uh, make a motion uh to pass with the current changes that were already made and just move forward? I mean.
For for the reasons that I stated.
Right, uh, for the reasons I stated uh the last meeting, the previous meetings that, you know. I believe that this is an administrative function and has. Not to be controlled by the council, and therefore I am in the agreement with the chief that. I believe that let the department take care of this, let them handle it like they do with everything else, and I would prefer personally to. Step away and and back away from this.
Uh, tonight is a vote on an ordinance, right? Not the camera implementation, or is it altogether?
Ordinance only.
Just the ordinance. So technically, an ordinance could pass and we could vote against the cameras.
Right.
Correct.
And vice versa. But I, but what's tonight's?
On, we're voting on this ordinance tonight.
Right, just the ordinance, which does not mandate. Implementation of the cameras.
No.
Correct. No, but it does, and again, it 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 does under section twelve fifty-five indicate if the council. Wants to implement the cameras, there is a process under twelve fifty-five that they must follow. So there is a procedure that we haven't really talked about, but there is a procedure, and just so everyone's clear, there's a procedure in the ordinance that if the council at some future date. Uh, or the police department wanted to get a grant for the ordinances or even seek money for a grant or even seek. Um, just inquiry about it. They've got to get council approval before they begin that process. And that and that has to be done by a public hearing first. So just I just want to make everyone clear that that's what section twelve dash fifty-five does.
But the process that this spells out is also the current process in putting out an RFP. Having a council vote, I I don't understand what the uh what restrictions would be in that section.
Well, it's it's a little, I mean, I don't, again, I'm I'm not, I'm just commenting on you, you know, it's not my desired job to tell you what is good of good policy or not, good policy, but this says. Municipal law enforcement agency, which would be the East Province Police Department, shall obtain city council approval following an advertised public hearing. So we don't advertise on a public hearing. Before we go out for RFP for contracts, like when we order bid for a water or pipes, we don't, we don't advertise, say, hey, we're going to go out to bid for pipes. We just go out for bid for pipes. So this. Requires advertising of a public hearing before you even can. Award or even begin to think of awarding a contract. So, for instance, if the East Province Police Department wanted to get a grant. Uh, for uh even a pilot program, you would first have to come before this, he would have to, the chief or whoever, it would be, have to come before this council. It would have to be advertised first. That's what the Jordan says, for a public hearing. Saying that the chief of police for the East Province Police Department is seeking uh approval of the city council to have a grant. We would have a public hearing on that grant, I guess, whether or not he can even apply for that grant. And then the city council would then uh vote yes or no if they want to go forward. So that so that that is a restriction that we currently don't have. Uh, that's uh for any RFPs, we don't follow that process.
Uh, what other sections uh do you have concerns with with the twelve dash uh five five two? Or just that one?
Me? I I I don't. I I with all due respect, Councilman, I I didn't see any of your amendments before you offered them tonight. It's not my role to suggest whether it's good or bad policy. I'm just telling you what the policy is under twelve fifty-five.
Uh, Mr. Silas, the process that I'm introducing tonight is the same process that we do for every other ordinance where where a council person has an opinion and then we change it on the floor. And, you know, we take a vote on that change. So this process is not foreign to any other processes that I've been involved with.
No, I'm not suggesting that's the case, but I'm suggesting that the process of that municipal law enforcement agency shall obtain city council approval following an advertised public hearing. We don't, that's that's the process. We don't, we don't.
I get your point, and this is why this is debatable. So. Uh, I'm not, I'm not stuck on that.
Okay, I'm going to say I'm just.
We've had a lot of suggestions and changes. Why don't you reword everything with all of the changes? And for the next meeting, we put both items on the agenda.
Well, this would have to go for first passage.
Ordinance and.
This is this requires.
Right.
Well, so that would be the first, you know, and I mean, it's like we we. Caught before the horse. I don't know where public may be thinking tonight. We're voting on cameras. We're not.
So, but, okay.
We're voting on an ordinance to.
It's spelled out in the in the docket. What item is going to be discussed. So that's not really an excuse. I mean. We're not here to vote. It was an advertised to vote on that resolution. It was advertised to vote on this for first passage. It's pretty clear. So. What I would like to do at this point, I I I get the sense of where this is going, so. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to uh for first passage with the amendments that we already voted on.
I'm going to second that.
Okay, Deputy Click, may we have a roll call, please?
Is discussion allowable still?
Yes, it is.
So we're starting with me. So I'm not going to support the ordinance, and here's why. When I think through this ordinance and I think through the role of flock cameras in the city. I'm weighing two things. I'm weighing first, the effectiveness of the system in helping police to do their job. And I'm weighing that against the specific current concerns that I have, which have to do with the Fourth Amendment. And cybersecurity, really. Uh, I've worked through a lot of those cybersecurity concerns. I'm not as concerned about those, having had an opportunity to talk, kind of tech stuff with the flock folks. And I'm reading loads and loads and loads of case law about Fourth Amendment stuff. So I'm I'm not ready to put those concerns away. That said, when I look at this ordinance, what it does to me by way of a couple of things. Is it makes the tool more difficult for the police department to use. And the way, the reason I say that is because it seems to me that A. Pulling things out of a potential policy and placing them in law, regardless of whether they're the same thing or not. Elevates the level of discipline, elevates the ramifications for a violation. Um, and it puts a particular officer. In my mind, into the position of having to make the decision as to whether use the tool or not, even when it can be effective. So from that regard. I I don't like the idea of any of the policy. Items being implemented in law. I'm also looking at the ordinance from the perspective of. It came from an outside organization. And it it's evident that it came from an outside organization because it's present in essentially identical forms. In multiple legislative bodies throughout the state. And that is not. An organization that specifically has the best interest of the city at mind. Uh, nor does it specifically have. The best interest of the police department, and certainly not police empowerment, as as one of its key missions. So. I'm concerned that. There may be. Litigation Easter eggs within that law that they know about and we don't. Uh, I'm concerned about opening ourselves up to litigation that we would not anticipate. Um, without a legal read of the law. And for all of those reasons, I don't think it's a good idea. So I vote no.
Next, please.
Uh, just on discussion, uh my my problem with this is. I I can't stand here and say that I'm a supporter of our police department, our chief, whom whom I have great faith in. And. Vote for something that he has said he is strongly opposed to. Um, I I just have to stay in support of the chief of police and what what he's done for our community so far. And if he was somewhat ambivalent and could say, well, I can live with this, I can live with that. But even if the, as I asked the question, if it was his entire policy as an ordinance, he has strong opposition. And with what is going on in the community, we're talking about um. The problem with theft that we've seen. I mean, I I want to go along with our chief of police on this.
Next vote.
We had the roll call and started with Nate.
I did. My vote was nay.
That was in the discussion.
Oh, well, I popped a nay vote on the end, so yeah. If I'm jumping the gun, I'm sorry. I can wait.
Mr. Paul. Let's, let's. It was. On the ordinance, current ordinance.
Made a motion as amended. Right? Correct.
Yep, so we had a vote from Councilman Kahoon, Councilman Roderick, and proceed, please, with the vote.
I did not get, uh, Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Nay.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Nay. Next item.
Can we just have him vote? Because you voted during discussion. That's I just want to ensure.
Like to take another roll call vote?
You just voted during the session. My vote will will be nay, but we didn't.
My vote is nay.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Adjournment.
Thank you, Chief.
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza. Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you.